So does it look like we're, we're all here? Gretchen, you said six commissioners, is that correct?
That is correct, Marco.
I think that's what I can.
I think so too.
Okay. Well, if everybody's ready, we'll get going. Looks like everybody's there. Okay, great. So let's do this. Time being six oh two. I call to order the City Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This is a regular meeting for August. It is August twenty five, two thousand twenty. And this is a Zoom meeting. Once again. Let's see where the webinar ID is. It is right here. The webinar ID for this meeting is eight four zero. Six, eight, five, two, one, four, five, nine. And if you want to call in for a comment or just to listen via phone, a good phone number is one, six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. And with that, I think Jen is our clerk tonight. So I'll ask for the roll call, please.
Commissioner Dem.
Here.
Commissioner Schaber.
Here.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Commissioner Gross Cup.
Here, thank you.
Commissioner Schacter. Commissioner Wissing. Commissioner Wussel.
Is it?
Um, Commissioner West.
There.
And Commissioner Kinkle.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, I would like to entertain a motion to seat our alternate Commissioner West for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. I guess we'll call for the question. Jen, please.
Commissioner Gross Cup.
Yes.
Commissioner Wussel.
Yes.
Commissioner Jim.
Yes.
Commissioner Schaber.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Item number three on our agenda tonight is to receive of the minutes from the. Oh, boy. July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty meeting. Entertaining a motion to receive those minutes.
I move to receive the minutes of July twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
Thank you, George. You have a motion?
Yes, sir.
And a second. Any discussion in the minutes? Please raise your hand. I don't see any hands up, so I will call for the question to receive the minutes.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Schaber.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Gross Cup.
Yes.
Commissioner Wussel.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Struggle.
Trying to get the.
Did Commissioner West answer?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, great. So that carries, right?
Yes, sorry. I think Ben, if you. Can tie your sound to the video. I think. I think you can do it in the. Where the little mute button is. Hopefully.
Okay, well, we'll see how it goes. Moving on, item number four on our agenda tonight. From citizen. Appearing for items that are not on the agenda. If anybody called in to say anything. Interesting, please let us know. And. See no hands up, so we'll move on to our first new item for tonight, and this is planning file forty three dash twenty. Consideration of a variance for the required side and rear yard setbacks for the construction of an accessory structure. Which includes a three hundred and fifty square foot detached garage and a hundred and ninety six square foot. Storage space at eight twenty Bennett Avenue. And I think Emery, please tell us all about.
Oh, sure. So I'm gonna share my screen here and just go through a short presentation on the application. Just a second. So item forty three twenty for the variance request for eight twenty Bennett. So just a little background information. So it's a single family home, five thousand square foot lot in the Art and Two zoning district. And the surrounding uses to the north is residential, east and west is also residential, and to the south is a church use here. So again, the variance request was for a three hundred and fifty square foot detached single car garage. With one hundred and ninety six square feet storage space. And the request was for relief from the setbacks to place the proposed structure. One foot from the rear lot line and two feet from the side lot line on the north side of the building. And the setback requirements for the zoning district are seen here, front being twenty, side at five, and the rear as ten feet. So just background on the structure itself. Original structure built in eighteen ninety eight. The applicant and current owner Kirk Ruth purchased the home in nineteen ninety nine. So there's a photo viewed from Bennett Avenue. And the other photo is there's an existing shed where the proposed garage will go. And that shot is taken from the alley on the east side of the lot. Additional items that have been added to the property in two thousand and two. The applicant and current owner received a variance to construct a one hundred and sixty five square foot guest house. And that was with the side and rear setbacks seen here. And then two thousand and six, the applicant and current owner received a four foot, eight inch variance into the side yard setback on the south lot line. To construct a dining area addition on the south side of the house that was part of a larger remodel. And then here is the view of the project proposal with the car, with the one car garage and the storage area. The applicant actually sent a three D walkthrough, which I'm going to bring up now. Hopefully I'll work and not crash everything. Let's see. It's work. So as you can see, this is the property from the front. Going through to the back. Everybody can see this. I'm not sure. Might be too much. And then so the garage you can see in the left side of your screen. This is viewed from the north side and then rotating to the back of the property. So this would be the view from the alley. Due to the garage and the right store. And then joining to the existing guest house. Oh. So the building envelope seen in red right there. And then just a little bit of analysis of the accessory structure limit is one thousand feet. For accessory structures, and this will total in seven hundred and eleven square feet, so that's within the limit. The lot coverage will result in forty four percent of the lot, which again is within the lot limit fifty percent. Then for required rear yard coverage, accessory structures may cover up to forty percent of a required rear yard. And the required rear yard is determined by multiplying the width of the lot by the required rear yard setback, which for this slot would be five hundred feet. And the proposed garage, storage room, and existing guest house would occupy three hundred and forty eight point nine three square feet of that rear yard requirement. Which is about seventy percent of coverage, which would be above the forty percent. So again, you have the seven variance criteria that this application would meet, and it would have to meet all seven. And here is the compliance summary for each item. So. Item number one, subject property having an exceptional shaped topography building configuration or other exception. That is not a general condition throughout the zone district. The property is similar to most other lots in the area. It does not have an exceptional topography. The primary structure is set slightly farther back compared to some other buildings on the block, but its size at five thousand is similar to several other lots on the block. Item number two, the strict application of code standards for variance would produce undue hardship. The applicant describes a typical sized garage would be placed on the property would be too close to the house. And cites the loss of open space and potential drainage issues as a reason to request the variance. Staff did not find that the relief from code was due fiscal strike constraints, but rather a preference present configuration. And then also without further evidence of drainage issues, it would be difficult to ascertain the undue hardship from replacement of garage. Item number three, the applicant did not create the hardship by his or her own actions. The property configuration was originally established with the original construction of the primary dwelling. And granted, current zoning setbacks are not in place. The applicant purchased the property nineteen ninety nine. And has since then added the guest house and rear of the property. So the current configuration of the property. Is in part a result of the owner and applicant's actions. Item number four, the variance request does not harm the public and does not impair the intent or purposes of the code. This variance is a request is not on the public or impair the intended purchase of the code. Per comments from wastewater department, the construction of the building this close to the alley. Could create problems in case of a surmount repair, being that it's a very narrow alley and any kind of excavation. Would probably expose the foundation of any buildings that close to the lot line. In addition to with the variance request, it would provide a positive benefit to the public with the creation of an off-street parking space. And it would relieve some of the demand for on-street parking in the neighborhood. Item number five, request demonstrates exceptional hardship not related to convenience or financial burden. Against staff found that the request was a preference for location of a garage and a result of existing property configuration. Item number six, the variance request will not violate building or fire code requirements. Requests did variance will require building permit and. Would comply with building and fire code. And then number seven, the variance is the minimum variance that will afford relief for the subject standards of the code. Staff on the various was not the minimum variance that would afford relief. There's still a gap between the garage and the existing house. Standard fire separation per building code is five feet, so you could go even a little bit closer. And again, the owner could locate even closer to the house by following necessary building code requirements for fire separation. So again. The variance requested is not the minimum variance that could be requested. So again, the required actions, action item number one, consideration of a variance from the requested ten year, ten foot rear yard setback. And five foot side yard setback. And again, commission can approve, approve of conditions or deny the application. Commission may also continue the application and request that the applicant provide more information. So based on the requirements to fulfill all seven of the variance criteria, staff recommendation is to deny the variance application with findings on page seven of the staff report. And this variance criteria that the application fits is number four and six. So that's all I had for that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Emery. Any questions to staff at this point from the commission? And we'll start with Commissioner Schaber, please.
Emery, do you know or did the water and wastewater people say with where that sewer main is located and how deep it is from the surface?
I didn't have any exact depth. What the comment was, was that. That alley being as narrow as it is, it just makes it very difficult for any major excavation, just the proximity of the sewer main to, to the foundations. So I didn't have the depth of what that is.
Did they indicate that? Foundation, greater foundation depth or some other structural? Design would, would help mitigate that potential problem?
I think you're muted.
Thanks. So in a previous, in the previous variance that was requested and approved in two thousand and two. The, one of the requirements was an indemnification agreement between the current owner. Agreeing that any costs and risks associated with utilities buried in the alley shall be borne by the applicant and successors. And so that, that agreement existed from two thousand and two for the variance to build that guest house on the lot line. So.
And that carries with the property in perpetuity, I presume?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Schaber, and on to Commissioner Gross Cup, please.
I had to do this. Um. Emery, thank you. So first question I have. That is that the guest house is essentially at the lot line. Is that correct?
Correct. The guest house is, would be a similar setback as the garage. So it'd be like one foot.
And the.
From the rear.
One foot, okay. And the. Variance that was granted by the previous in the early two thousands commission. It, how does that applicability apply to this application in terms of that commitment about? You know, burying any costs if there were to be some kind of need in the alley.
So I mean, the original variance in two thousand and two for the guest house was granted for the guest house. The guest house was constructed. And that agreement continues with the guest house. Now, as far as how it applies to the garage application. This is a new application for a new accessory structure located on the property. So it would be separate items. But then that original agreement would carry forward with the guest house.
So it would not apply to this application?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Um, and then your recognition in the staff report about the, the reasons to not approve the request relate to not understanding. Or not having enough information, I guess, basically around drainage from the applicant? And could you just describe that a little more, please? Because it would be too.
Sure. So.
So.
Yeah, so the applicant indicated in their application that one reason for. Wanting the garage placed where they proposed was to avoid drainage issues with it being moved closer to the house. And then. Staff just didn't find enough evidence in the application or additional information to indicate more on that item. So it's kind of a lack of additional information to see whether or not drainage would be an issue if it were closer to the house.
And do you have the opportunity as staff to have that interaction with the applicant? Or is that just not, I guess I'm just. You don't get that opportunity to ask that question to the applicant?
We were just looking for more information. I mean, that wasn't included in the original application.
Okay. Could you remind me when the application was submitted? I'm sorry.
Correct.
What date was it submitted?
Oh, I'm not sure. And I think in July. I mean, it was met the six week deadline.
Okay, relatively. Okay. That's all. Thank.
Thank you. Commissioner Wussel, please.
Can you just elaborate a little bit on why you believe we should, that you're recommending a denial? Just elaborate just a bit more. I mean, I get what I'm obviously reading. Go a little deeper.
Sure. So then the main reason for denial was that it just did not meet all seven of the criteria. So for example, the minimum, minimum variance that will afford relief of the subject standards of the code. So it was not the minimum variance requested. So that was one reason. And also too, with the request for the garage and the storage space on the lot. Again, without the additional information for drainage, the request is to have the garage in a particular location at a preference and not necessarily a hardship of the applicant. And then also to the application. Exceeds the required rear yard coverage. So in code, you have to, you're allowed forty percent of the required rear yard to be covered, and this would cover about seventy percent. So those would be kind of a three main reasons for it now.
Yeah, that was my only question. I just, I always am a little surprised when. An application comes forward and you guys do recommend denial, because usually that means that you've worked with the applicant for some time. Is that correct? And made recommendations?
I mean, again, the application is, was looked at as how it was submitted. So based on the current, the plans, that's how denial was. Recommended.
And did you guys visit with the applicant about alternates that would maybe remove these concerns?
So we had a pre-application meeting in actually November of two thousand and nineteen. And then the applicant submitted this application in July, and then there was a development review meeting. The most recent one in August, which we went over the application, the applicant was provided comments for the application.
And did you see significant changes between the November of nineteen application and then the August change? Were there changes or was it pretty much the same?
No, the November pre-application meeting application was actually a different configuration, which required. The driver to actually back into the garage off the alley. So it was a similar request with the setbacks, but it was a slightly different design.
And did you feel that the applicant took your recommendations for making this more feasible route for the city? And do you feel that the applicant took your recommendations and implemented them when they reapplied in, in August?
So the, I mean, the designs are different. The location was similar.
So not really, just maybe a little bit of change.
With, with the setbacks, no, but with the design, yes, because there were a lot of, there were a lot of questions with the initial application in November about. Having a garage, we have to back into it. And so this was made different to have, be able to turn into the garage. So the design was different. The applicant did make. Changes as far as the design, but the location, no.
That was all of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wussel. Jen, please.
I just wanted to clarify that there's a, there's, it wasn't an application in November. It was a pre-application conference. So it's. There weren't two submittals, just to clarify.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sipperly.
Hey, my question, and thanks for the briefing. My question was one regarding the letter that came in from one of the neighbors. Addressing snow plowing. Now, I know the city does sometimes take snow plows down there. Are property owners on either side responsible for providing places for snow to be stored?
Um, the letter that you mentioned will be read into the public record later. I'll just want to mention that. I mean, as far as snow storage, I don't believe property owners are required to provide snow storage from the alley. As it's publicly owned. But again, it goes back to the wastewater comment that it is a narrow alley. So having a building that close to the lot line does create a more congested area for things such as snow, garbage pickup, so.
And to follow up with that, in terms of what we have on the books, do we have any minimum turn radius or any? Sort of verbiage that says you're not allowed to swerve onto an adjacent property in order to pull into your garage, because obviously. Being tucked this close to the alley, you can't really, it'd probably be difficult to maneuver a car into this garage. Do we have any regulations as to turn radius or widths of driveways near accessing garages?
So that was one of the comments from engineering that any proposed project, they wanted to have more information on the turning radius. And the applicant did provide, which I can bring up here. He did provide an updated plan, which shows the turning radius. Can show it here. And I believe this was used, was modeled on the recommendation of engineering department. Just a second. So here's the updated plan showing the turning radius. Of a vehicle. Into the garage. And that was updated, added to the plan after, from a comment from engineering department asking to show that on the plans. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Sipperly. Any, any other questions to staff at this point? No. Emery, just quick, do you know if the applicant is renting out the guest house?
So the applicant has an accessory tourist rental permit for eight twenty Bennett for the guest house. So they have a permit. On file. So.
And we don't, we don't require a parking spot for that, do we?
I know.
Okay. Excellent. That's it for me. Thank you. Thank you, Emery. With the applicant, please present your item.
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Kurt Kareth, my wife Julie, eight twenty Bennett Avenue, Glenwood.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. First off, for the meeting tonight. Yeah. So when we, when we approached this, this, just the idea, it was mainly with parking in mind. So I mean, I know you guys are all aware that parking in Glenwood is usually the first thing that comes up in a project. And we've, the churches, they're great neighbors and we really like them a lot, but there's been, there've been times where literally we have to park up the hill, the next block up halfway down the block in order to find a spot. And it's, it's, doesn't happen very often. It's probably happened five times in the in the twenty years we've lived in this house. And it's, so it's not a big deal, but it is definitely kind of, you know, troubling sometimes. Usually you don't have to go that far. Sometimes we're just at the other, at ninth, you have to park on ninth or something. But that was, that was a generation of this where we, we thought, how could we add a, how could we add a single car garage? Just to get one car off the road, um, you know, it gives us a place to, you know, you know, to whatever, do crafts, store bikes, store skis, all that stuff. And it was just kind of a, a place that we wanted to do. So when I started looking at it, um, the guest house is where it is. The side yards or side yard setbacks are the way they are. The front yard setback is the way it is. So there's really no other option for the, for a placement of a garage except for in the backyard. And so, okay, when you go to the backyard, you look at it and you're where it's placed right now, we had one of those kind of per, or parallel to the, to the alley. And it was, it just kind of got troubling or problematic toward to think of, you know, coming up the alley and then you have to turn and back it in. So if you had an eighteen foot garage door, and let's say your car is fourteen, fifteen feet long, you can see it's getting kind of And so the reason I flipped it and changed it where it was more of a turn off of the alley was to kind of be able to push it towards the north side of the lot. The two foot setback is we've got a one foot overhang. And so I gave us a foot there in order to make sure that we kept all of our snow and drainage on our property. That we'll have snow stops on that gable on that north side roof to keep everything on our, on our, on our lot. And the reason also that the, the storage room is sloped to the backyard is for that same reason. We're not putting anything off of our lot. We contain all of the drainage on our lot. Emery said that for permit, I would have to have a drainage letter from an engineer, which we're fine to do. So I I don't have that now, but we would. Let's see. So yeah, so, um, yeah, I had some notes. Commissioner Shaver, uh, the foundation and utilities. I've spoken to an engineer, a structural engineer, and what I'm planning to do is to do like piers for my foundation. And so on that, on that back wall or the back of our lot line, we would have three piers that would support the whole, the whole project. And so what the piers would be twelve to fourteen inch kind of a drilled pier that when, uh, that would just be spaced along that, that edge. And so my structural engineer has said that those are great for if you had, if you had to dig up, dig a hole back there. Um, when we did our renovation, the sewer line is fourteen feet deep in the, in the, in the alley. And so and we replaced our sewer line. So we shouldn't have a sewer line issue on our side. I mean, you can't say never, but we should. And so the building would go over, but it would also, the alley is about eighteen inches to twenty inches above the ground in our backyard. And so we would have a little bit of space there if you ever had to dig it out that, you know, I think underneath the building. Um, let's see, utilities, yeah, the utilities are back there. Our electrical is on the opposite side of the alley from the back line of our lot. And so we don't have that issue to deal with. Yeah, so the, okay, so the reason we put the, put the garage where it is is that if we, if we were to take, do the ten foot setback, the garage is then touching the back of our house. The back of our house is a shed roof draining into the backyard. So now we'd have a shed roof hitting the wall of a garage, which is going to be a drainage issue because you never want to drain to a vertical wall. So we would then have to, on our house, uh, come in with some kind of a additional roof to shed and, and then also the windows in our bathroom, our bathroom is that back corner. It'll blow out all the windows in our bathroom that we would prefer not to do. And then also the, the reason it's put where it is is we're trying to save a little bit of green space in the backyard. And then also a walkway between our house and the garage that gets to the little garden that we have. And so we're just trying to be able to access the whole lot through a five foot. I mean, I, if, if you guys said, okay, you need to make it a three foot walkway and pull the thing back two feet, I could probably do that. I mean, that's not awful, but it's, 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 I mean, it's just, you know, and I know that it's, you know, we're trying to save our backyard and it's not, you know, it's a preference and I get that, you know, but it's just, we're just trying to maximize the amount of space we have in the backyard and still be able to pull one car off the street, so. I think that's my spiel.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions to the applicant from the commission? Please raise your hand. Commissioner Grosskup.
Sorry, can I add one more thing? I'm sorry about that. I do have, I do have approval letters from my neighbor on the north. A church building administrator, owner, whatever he is. And then also another neighbor across the street that have all approved it on the basis of kind of pulling a car off the, off the street. I mean, we've all had issues with it and that's kind of, I asked the three people to consider a letter if they would, and they all wrote an approval letter, which is in the file.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Grosskup.
Well, thank you, Kurt. Um, so a couple of questions. I totally appreciate the parking situation on your street. It's challenging. Could you just explain again, like, you said you could move it in a little bit, but then you lose your green space. You could move it in three feet is what I heard you kind of say. Is that right from the rear?
Yeah, what I, the way I've set it up now is that the back wall of the garage is five feet off of our house wall.
Okay.
And then we've got a one foot roof overhang off of our house, so four feet airspace, I guess. And what I was saying is like, if it was something that, if we pushed the garage off of the alley another foot or two, you know, because the way, the, the way the, the setback, the wall is a foot off of the lot line, but the eve is kind of on the lot line. If that makes sense. So it's, you know, the walls are a foot in, but then the roof is on the back, on, excuse me, on the very back wall of the lot.
And just so I understand your shed or your, your building that you would be replacing this with, that's on the lot line or it's one foot off?
It's a, I mean, it's a little, it's a little funky. It's kind of cranked a little bit, so it's a little over our lot line. But, and it's a little off of the lot line. So it's just, it's kind of just on an angle. But yeah, I would consider it lot line. There's a fence that runs around it, so.
Yeah, you had the photos there, so, okay. And are you building in any way like a garage that? I mean, I know the typical car, I think you just said fourteen feet, which I was thinking, man, is my car fourteen feet? But are you building in any way a garage that's a little oversized or is it really truly a one car garage?
I mean, it's, it's twenty five feet deep, which, you know, you can get away with, you know, typically like a code car is nine feet wide by nineteen feet long. That's a code parking space and that's a, that will fit a excursion or whatever inside barely. And so my car is not near that big. And then I've also, so I put it at twenty five, thinking if we're nineteen and that gives me enough room for like a workbench on the far, on the far west, west side of the garage. So I put a two foot workbench in there. And so if it's, you know, if it's, it'd be twenty three, so I've got a couple of feet in front of the car and then a workbench. So yes, I could definitely, if, if, if I needed to, I could definitely trim what are eighteen inches out of it lengthwise.
Yeah, it's just a tough area of town and these things are so tough. I don't know if I have any other questions at this time. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any, any additional questions? To the applicant? No, we'll see none. Uh, thank you. Thank you, Kurt.
Thanks.
And Julie, um, I just have a quick question for staff. Is, is this property in the GID?
Uh, I believe so, yes.
Believe so. So, so not that it's relevant to this a whole lot, but there, there's no parking requirements in the GID, right? Off the parking requirement. Sorry, I should say that.
Marco, this is
Confirm that.
Sorry. Yeah, I've got the, the zoning map here and eight twenty Bennett actually is not in the GID.
It's probably right on the other side, isn't it? Right on the outside.
It's a, it's a half a block off.
Half a block off. And so there would be parking requirement if there was any construction or, or anything going on.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, anybody from the public like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand. I don't know if any of the attendees are here to comment on this.
And sorry, this is Gretchen again. Um, do, Emery, do you want to read the letter from Ernest and Marjorie Gerbas into the record or do you want me?
I, I have it up.
Okay, go ahead then, whenever, whenever, uh, the chairman tells you that it's time.
I was just gonna get to that since I don't see any hands come, going up. So Emery, please, if you could add that to the public record, that would be great.
Okay, so this is reading into the public record, a letter from Ernest and Marjorie Gerbas, nine oh four Palmer Avenue, Glenwood Springs, and the letter was received August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Regarding eight twenty Bennett Avenue applicant Kurt Karuth, the following are our comments to the proposal. One, as in any building project, a survey should be completed by a registered land surveyor to determine actual boundaries and so mark with survey pins. Two, the city of Glenwood Springs plows alley snow when needed and should not be plowed entirely to a rear lot of eight one nine Palmer Avenue. So the applicant Karuth has no snow storage space with a one foot back. The one foot setback in alley would make it almost impossible to park a car in the proposed garage unless driving on adjacent private property. The setback should be at least five feet minimum. Four, drainage of roof lines should have gutters installed, not drain to adjacent property owners. Five, a site visit by planning and zoning by a drive-by would be appreciated. Ernest and Marjorie Gerbas. That concludes the letter.
Thank you, Emery. That was one public comment that we heard. And if I see, oh, there's just gonna say additional questions to either staff or the applicant. Please raise your hand and we'll start with Commissioner Wusso, please.
So the Gerbas has mentioned the necessity for a survey. Isn't that kind of a requirement for any improvement on the property already? And did you guys ascertain one prior to designing this? There, and currently there are no concerns encroachments on any adjacent property. All that's clean?
Everything except for the, the little, the little shed, the existing shed is got a corner that's probably six inches over, but it
Would that be remedied? Would that be remedied? If you were to obviously create this new project, would that be that encroachment would be remedied?
It would.
Okay. Okay, and then I did have one other question I wrote down too. Oh, that setup of the setback, uh, so they're obviously requesting it be increased. Do you have the flexibility in your design to do an increased setback?
Yeah, I, I think I could shrink. I mean, it's, we've got right now from the edge of our rear house to the, or to the scar, excuse me, the face of our existing house to the face of the new storage room is like seventeen feet. And so we've got, I don't know, two and a half feet. You know how they put gravel around a house for drainage? We've got that and then we've got the whatever fifteen feet of the existing house. And so I think we could, the, the garage, I mean, I think we could pull it back, you know, a foot or eighteen inches or something, definitely to, it just kind of, everything's squeezing more into the yard. It's just kind of squeezing.
Yeah. And, and that to reiterate that the goal in the current design is to have more green space in your backyard and to kind of maximize the, you know, taking
Well, keep, keep what we have, yeah. Keep as much as we have.
Okay, that, that makes sense. Okay, perfect. That was the end of my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? No, we'll see none. Excellent. So I will bring it to the commission. And I'm entertaining a motion in planning item forty-three dash twenty, consideration of variance from the required site and rear yard setbacks.
So I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, but I'm gonna make a motion for approval. And so my, my rationale there is that I kind of took the, the entire project in its entirety. And the Glenwoods need diverse lodging accommodations as well as encouraging infill, but more importantly from the comp plan. Just minimizing human and wildlife conflicts. I feel like whenever we give people large enough garages that they can put trash cans and they can put things in there that make it so they don't have those animal-human conflicts. But I would like to add the condition, obviously, that a drainage plan be provided and all recommendations be implemented from the drainage plan.
Uh, okay, thank you. That's a, that's a motion to approve now. I hate to do this, but, um, the findings you, you mentioned they are basically countering the findings that staff provided, right? That, that's how you see it? Okay, excellent.
And really, it, you know, a handful of, of areas within the comp plan would be the, the findings that I believe warrant the approval, which is why I made the motion.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. We have a motion approved. Going once. Twice. And not even, not even a second to discuss?
Think a second.
Okay, excellent. So we have a motion in a second to approve, um, action item one in, uh, planning item forty-three dash twenty. So please, uh, commission, any discussion? Commissioner Grosskup.
Oh, so I, um, I just think we have such a confusing town downtown. It's really challenging to have these big setbacks, um, you know, when you have these shotgun homes and those lots. Um, and it's very reasonable to have a garage and we have a parking challenge in those areas, whether it's in the GID or not. So I really understand the motion and agree with some of the sentiment. On the other hand, you know, we just went through this huge coach thing, uh, revision, and we do have the standards. So I think what I heard the applicant say is that they would be willing to compromise and we could get a little more of a setback. And so I would like to solicit that. So I think I heard that, and maybe I need to be corrected, but right now would be a one foot. I know the eve sticks over, but you know, could it be increased to a three foot? Then the eve is, uh, I, I don't know, two feet in the rear. I think the drainage, uh, study, having that on place is absolutely important. And I sort of feel like it's the applicant's choice to want to have a garage versus have the green space. And it's kind of like, there's just so much you can do and a lot like that downtown, and you have to make that choice. So, um, that's my contribution at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Wusso.
I would, I would mirror, um, Commissioner Grosskup's comments in saying that I, I actually vacillated on adding a recommendation that they increase the setback. So I'm comfortable amending my motion if it's the general consensus that everyone feels like having more of a setback is appropriate.
Okay, so we already have an amended motion. Can I get an amended second? I s, I see your mouth move, but I have no idea what you're saying.
I'll amend the second for all, all, all. Motion to amend this.
Excellent. Thanks. Excellent. So Commissioner Excellent. So Commissioner Zippoli, please.
Thanks. You know, in looking at the plan, and I actually did walk down through that alley today. I noticed that no other garages right in that section of alley do open directly onto the alley. I did see several other sheds that directly above it. To me, it appears as though the garage size could be scaled back to be more compliant. I don't think we're ever gonna get to our 40% lot coverage, but I would be happy if the overall size of either the garage and/or the adjacent storage were to shrink to get us a little closer to that requested, required lot coverage. And I, I would be also happy with a compromise if, if this garage could set back just a few more feet from the alley. I think that I would find it approvable. So perhaps we can direct the owner to make a few minor changes and come up with a compromise. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Zippoli. Emery, just real quick, the, it's 30% over, right? For the, for the rear yard coverage?
Correct.
It's 30%. So do we know what that trend, it's in the square footage?
Correct. And that's included with the, with the guest house, the part, part, part of the guest house that is in the rear yard, quieter yard.
So do we know how much square footage that is, that it needs to change if we, if we, what 30% of, what's 30% of square feet? Of, of rear yard?
One second. So, oh, one second.
Maybe while you look at this, I'll have Commissioner Shaver, please.
Well, I, I don't, I don't, I can't support this motion. It seems, you know, I have no doubt that this would be attractive and very functional for the owner. But it just seems to me that it totally flies in the face of all of the zoning already. The, there's encroachments on this property all over the place. So it, it's, it just doesn't seem to me that we're even close to, to following zoning. And as far as the variance criteria, we're not meeting even a majority of those. I agree with the staff in that regard. You know, as far as creating an off-street parking spot, if that's the main goal, you could create a spot to park in the, in the back area. I don't know how that would be viewed in terms of qualifying for the open area in the backyard. If you have, you know, a pad or even a, whatever the pavers are that allow grass to grow through. How that would satisfy that requirement? But, you know, it's, like I said, I appreciate architecture and what architects can do. And I think for their purposes, it'd be great, but it's really not what we're talking about in, in general terms in that, in that zone district. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, George. And just calling on Emery quick, do we have some sort of a square footage roughly?
Yes. So again, the 40% of the 500 required rear yard would be 200 square feet of coverage. And with the guest room, based on the dimensions, you're already looking at 90 feet of that 200 being taken up by the guest house. In that required setback. So that would leave you with approximately about 110.
110 available.
200.
Okay, 100 available to build out.
40%.
Just stay at 40%. Okay. Which, which the, the garage and the storage are 300 something together? No.
Come, combine their 546. The garage is 350 and the storage room is 196.
Okay. Thank you, Emery. Any other discussion? On this, I guess the, the only thing I might want to say is that I, I like the design. I think it fits the lot. We have approved ADUs with one foot setbacks in the past, no problem. What I'm actually struggling with is the code. I'm struggling with the variance criteria. As you guys know, I'm always the one that doesn't like this kind of stuff. And, and I'm in the middle of this. I'm torn because on, on one hand, I see an improvement to this downtown property. And on the other hand, I see the code that says you have to match certain criteria. Impossible. You cannot, especially when a decent proposal comes along like this, there is no way you can ever move forward with anything that is an improvement. This is an improvement. So I still haven't made up my mind yet. I, like I said, I like what I see, but, but again, this part of the code is not working. And we need to address this. And possibly, well, I shouldn't say this, but we need to fix this. Because so many things will, will not happen because of, of the way that we address variances. And, and this is a prime example how you can get a, a really nice looking addition to an older home in a downtown lot where, where like Commissioner Grosskup said, it's a challenge to do everything and anything. And I think Commissioner Wussel said that too. But the criteria is holding us back now. Yes, the criteria is there to protect certain things from happening, but when you have something like this, that makes complete sense. I, I don't know how to fix it. We have a workshop later on and we need to address this and not just in the design standards, also in the zoning. And with that said, if there's any more discussion on this, please raise your hand. As I contemplate what I want to do with this. I like it, but I'm struggling. So anyway, any, any more discussion, please? Commissioner Grosskup.
So I think I've lost track of the motion, so I request that that be stated at some point. And I do want to say that I appreciate what Commissioner Schaefer said about the zoning in terms of the, the coverage. I, I really like, you know, I totally understand you need a garage that is a modern amenity. But there is that 40% choice of doing the storage. So there's a lot of choice going on in this particular proposal. And I think that's what somewhat Commissioner Schaefer was pointing out to us. So I just, a little bit, where are we with our motion, please? So that's what I'd like to hear. Thanks.
Commissioner Wussel, can I have you repeat the motion, please, with the added condition?
Yeah, so I recommended approval with, you know, all, implementing all recommendations on the drainage plan. And then we amended the motion to say that rather than a one foot setback, it would be a three foot setback.
Thank you. I mean, let me, would, George, if, if, if the 40%, or I should say, if the lot coverage was closer to the 40%, would you be more inclined to? Give me your input. Commissioner Grosskup, in the meantime. Oh, George is ready. Sorry, Catherine. George, please.
Well, I just, I just don't, you know, I think that you allow this and then you allow it, you have to allow it to the next door neighbor and down the street. And, and it's, it's not what the zoning is calling for. Maybe it's the fault of the zoning.
But, but do you think this is a bad thing?
Do I think it's a bad thing to get cars off the street? No.
And do you think?
And do I, I like the design. Yeah. Like I say, I.
I'm sorry to jump in, but the, the way it's proposed, you don't see this as being an improvement to our downtown? I mean, when you drive down our alleys downtown, it's, it's a, it's a crapshoot. This is an vast improvement with maybe a little bit of a larger setback.
Is that the, I don't know where that's in the code.
What?
That, that you don't, you don't follow the code if it's an improvement?
It, it's not, but it could be part of the comprehensive plan.
But like beautification, I mean, ultimately improving upon parcels.
Well, we're saying that it's not an attractive parcel now and this will make it better. I'm, I'm not sure that's the case.
But back to my original thought, if, if the 70% coverage would come down, would that help? I'm just trying to find a middle ground here. So I need to hear from all of you.
Well, I think one, I'm not sure that, that, yes, it's nice to have a garage. I lived without one for many years and have one now. And yes, it's, it's great. But you could achieve off-street parking without a building. And I'm not sure about the motion. Are we talking three feet from the alley or three feet from the, from the side yard, which?
I, I was, I was representing the, the alley only because I think that's the, the biggest impact to the surrounding neighbors. Just because of the current location of the shed, you know, that, that doesn't have as much of an impact. And truthfully, I feel like, I feel like for the neighbors and adjacent property owners, I don't know that this will have a large impact. But I could be mistaken. One other thing too, I think if, if we do an approval with a three foot setback, doesn't that inherently reduce coverage? I don't know the calculation, but we are reducing that coverage just by adding two more feet.
I think it would only, it would only help with that if he would shrink the buildings. You would have to reduce the square footage in the buildings to achieve that.
Um, Commissioner Jim, wondering if, you know, we're kind of a little bit in the middle, not, not a super majority yet that I see personally. I'm wondering if this is a situation where we may want to consider, and I don't know the procedure, but do we want to ask the applicant if they want to? I mean, I could see us potentially continuing this to receive a new proposal or, you know, a somewhat of a, of a different site plan from the applicant, but I'm a little confused. Do we stop that in the middle of the motion or how does that work?
Good thought. We, we, sometimes in the, oh, Jen, please.
We have a motion on the floor, but if that is the pleasure, the motion can be withdrawn and then the, we could bring this back at the next meeting if that, if that's the direction. I do know that there may be some other things that the Public Works Department would like to bring up. So if, if that is the pleasure, that's one path.
Okay. If, if we don't have to prolong it, I'd say let's not. But if the commissioners or the commission would feel more comfortable to look at a slightly different design with, from what I hear, with a larger represented setback and possibly a smaller lot coverage, maybe it's the way to go. Commissioner Wussel.
So Jen mentioned Public Works making some recommendations? Or what exactly would, have they not done that they would do moving forward?
If, I would hate to speak for Public Works. I'm wondering if you will let Matt Langhor speak for themselves.
Well, I mean, he's reviewed the application?
I would, I would, I would imagine.
And, but he had further recommendations or I, I'm, I'm sorry, Jen, can you just like elaborate on your, your comment about what they would want to do?
Well, I think that there may be something that's related to this, the foundation or the, the structure. I, and I, I think that I, I can't elaborate for him. I would love to have him do that, answer that question.
I see him. So Matt, please.
I wasn't sure if I was allowed to elaborate at this point and the whole process moved into a motion so quickly that I was like, okay, we'll just go with what we got. You know, I would have definite concerns about Kurt moving forward with a pier foundation. If you put three piers across the back of that foundation and I have to dig 12 feet behind them, we're gonna pull all the dirt out between those piers and from underneath his slab. So I would disagree with his foundation designer that that's a great idea. I think that's probably a terrible idea. Our sewer line is about six feet off of his wall within that alleyway back there. I don't think it's 14 feet deep. My records say it's 10 feet deep. But you have to consider, I gotta go down 10 feet and whatever he puts under his garage is not going to be held up by three or four piers. It needs to be a continuous foundation wall. The other thing for Kurt to consider, and he has, because he's a smart guy, is that one foot off of an alleyway means that every time we plow that alleyway, he will have garage, he will have snow pushed up against his garage door. Right. Because there is no place to push snow in those alleyways. We try the best that we can to push it forward, but it doesn't work really well. Because everybody has built sheds and fences and everything right up against it. So pushing snow against the fence is one thing. Us pushing snow against his brand new building and garage door, I would like some liability waiver of that doesn't, if we've damaged it, it's not our fault. If we damage a building when we dig sewer, that it's not our fault, just like the ADU was at that particular time. And I'm not an architect, but it seems like a 25 foot deep garage could probably be 22 feet deep. And in a storage shed, it's 200 square feet, could be way less than that. He already gave you the six foot setback from the back of the building to the garage. He said that could be three feet. It seems like you could get six or seven feet off that back lot line if there was some negotiations. And maybe then it's more reasonable. Turning radius into a parking stall in a parking lot is 24 feet of width. You've only got 14 feet or so to the back of his garage right now. He's gonna be three-point turning that unless he's got a smart car or something. I don't know about. I don't know what Kirk drives. But it seems like there's some, some tweaks that could occur that I don't usually comment on because it's not Public Works. I'm concerned about that sewer line, the electric lines on the other side of the alleyway. I don't even care about it because it's out of the way of the building. But it sure seems like there is some, some tweaks that could occur that would meet both parties' needs and be this, make this a more reasonable thing. If Kurt and his wife were willing to kind of have those negotiations, and I've probably talked way too much at this point. I'm very concerned about the, the depth of that sewer line versus what foundation he suggested. That can be worked out with a different foundation type. And I'm definitely concerned about what damage we may do to that building with only a one foot offset. Because plowing in those alleyways, as you know, if you've ever driven them, the trash trucks make a rut, we make a rut. And then all of a sudden plows are kind of bouncing around and we have hit things before. And I'd be very concerned about that building only one foot off that right away. So those are my comments. And I'm sorry to butt in at this point. I should have a half an hour ago.
That's all right. I invited you, so it's all good. Thanks, Matt. Very informative. Commissioner Shaver, please.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to suggest that if the applicant would like to weigh in at this point, it might, might shed some light. If, if they're, you know, preferring us to go ahead with a vote on this motion, that would be one thing. Or maybe they would rather wait to the next meeting when come back with a different design.
Okay, let me, let me finish the, the comments here quick or the discussion and we'll, we'll refer to them. So let's, Commissioner Zippoli, please.
Thanks. Would we not be requesting a variance to not meet the minimum or the maximum backyard lot coverage? Would that be a separate variance or why are we not considering that?
You know, honestly, I've never even heard.
You know, honestly, I've never even heard of this. I mean, of all the, it was never in the packet, so I'm not. It's honestly, this is the one part of the job that I've never heard of about the rear lot. Trent mentioned about the total lot coverage. But I've never heard anything about the rear lot and how you determine what's the rear lot. Is it just from the building back? So I don't know. So I'll have to look into that. Um, as far as the building, I would be fine. What what we would do is just take the building. I would probably cut two or three feet off of the garage. And we'll just shift the building back. You know, the additional two feet from one to three, and then I'll just have to pinch down the storage room a little bit to save a little bit of the backyard. I mean, I'm. I'm happy to do that. And as far as uh, sorry if I just jumped on to all the comments. As as far as Matt's comments, yeah, I'll have to just talk to my structural engineer because he might not have understood kind of the the depth. And I mean, I typically know that they shore. And they, when they do a dig, they shore it up as well. So I'll have to just deal with that. Coming up.
That's um, thank you. Commissioner Wusa.
My question is actually really similar to Commissioner Shaver's in saying that to the applicant, would you prefer? We take a couple of these recommendations and vote, which it sounds like there's some indecision and wavering back and forth on both sides, or would you prefer to make some recommendations, talk to Matt Langhorst and come back next month? And with a handful of these recommendations and and sit in front of us again.
You know, I could probably do that. That's not, I mean, we're we're, you know, the season's kind of getting away from us and I was hoping to get going on it, but I I think that might make sense to show you guys the three-foot setback versus one and just show you kind of how it how it looks and just kind of pinch everything down a bit, you know, it might. And then I could also run the number for the rear rear lot percentage coverage as well. And I think I think taking off, I mean, because if we're sixteen feet wide, I think the garage is by three. And then taking a little bit of the storage room, I'm going to cut, you know, sixty-plus, seventy feet out of it, which maybe that gets us a lot closer to that rear yard percentage. So yeah, I'd be fine with that.
So while I am still talking, then I'm actually just going to rescind my motion and make a motion instead to continue this. And I would need the second to be rescinded as well.
Commissioner West. I I take it that was, yes, I rescind my second and issue a new second to the new motion to continue.
That's correct.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh. Okay, um, if we have no more discussion, um, then I think we we. Kurt, I think you got directions um from us. I I if there's any questions or anything we could elaborate, but it seems to me that reduce size to increase or decrease rear yard um coverage and increase setback. And is did I get that correct from the commission? I think so. So with with no more discussion in this, I'll call for the question to continue this item.
Commissioner West.
That's correct.
Uh, Commissioner Dan.
Yes.
Commissioner Grosscap. Yes. Commissioner Wusso?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly?
Yes.
Mission passes.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, thank you, Kurt and Julie. Thanks, Commission. That concludes our. Public hearing, first public hearing for tonight. Uh, our next uh item on the agenda is another new item, and that is Planning File Twenty-eight Twenty. Consideration of a location and extent application to construct a civic facility recycle center at one oh six Thirteenth Street, formerly thirteen hundred Pitkin Avenue. And I need to scroll down, but I assume that's why Matt is actually here.
Um.
Oh, is it Gretchen first?
Yeah, Chairman Dom, I'm gonna just uh give you a brief overview, excuse me, of the of the project. I'm going to share my screen here. Come on. There we go. All right, is my screen up? Okay, great. Thank you. So, um. Here we go. So the city proposes to reestablish an in-town recycling center at this location on your aerial, which is at the end of Thirteenth Thirteenth Street as it ties into our stubs into the uh raft uh trail. Uh, as the commission is aware, the recycling center has been located in South Canyon landfill since twenty seventeen. Before then, it was located at ten fifteen School Street, which is only about two blocks to the north of this site. The city purchased this zero point three five acre property from Western Petroleum in January twenty twenty. And as this aerial image shows, there um are in the image several above-ground tanks, but these have since been removed. So the proposed new recycling center includes eighteen recycling containers. A small one hundred square foot hut for uh the city employee who's going to attend to uh the recycle center. A six-foot-tall perimeter screening fence, an asphalt looped driveway. And then also uh security lights, security cameras, a new entry gate and associated utility and drainage system improvements. This application is being processed as a location and extent review. And just to review the purpose, it is to review projects of public and quasi-public entities in relation to applicable policies and goals of the comprehensive plan, the purpose and intent of the code, and to ensure minimization of adverse impacts. So, location and extent review, there are a small handful of criteria. The one, this first one is consistency with the comprehensive plan and other cities plant, city plans and policies. And the narrative that was in your packet included uh all of these and more um statements from the comprehensive plan. So I'm not going to review that, those. Instead, I'm just going to add that the proposed improvements also conform to the future land use map that's in the comp plan. It shows the property is classified as commercial. This recycle land use, or I'm sorry, the the comp plan, uh, commercial land use classification accommodates a wide range of goods and services for both regional and local markets. The next is consistency with the general purpose and intent of the code. So we checked zoning, um, compliance with geo-hazards, off-street parking, landscaping, open space and screening, exterior lighting and the non-residential design standards. So um with regard to zoning, um, the property is uh CO, um, zoning, which is a commercial land use, which allows civic buildings slash civic-type facilities. The outdoor storage component of this use would normally require a special review or special use review. However, as I already stated, that this is going to be a location and an extent review application uh where we assess consistency with the comp plan and the general purpose and intent of the code and then go through these criteria. Regarding sensitive area protection, um, this property is not in any geo-hazard zone. There is one uh off-street parking space required, and that's going to be accommodated on the city-owned par- property just to the north of this recycle center. Regarding common open space landscaping and screening, the proposed landscape area meets the the square footage requirements from the code. And then the code also requires four trees, sixteen shrubs and thirty-one perennials. Four trees are shown on the plan. Uh, five shrubs are going to be located along the north property line. And um, no perennials are going to be um. Were noted on the site plan, no perennials are going to be included because the prop, the these landscape areas, uh, no irrigation is going to be installed. Instead, the city's going to have to hand-water these landscape areas. Regarding screening, a- as I indicated, uh, in the site plan overview of the recycle center, there will be a six-foot-tall, solid um screening fence uh around the the property. Exterior lighting, um, there are two security lights that will be installed along the property's west boundary. The code requires full cutoff fixtures and then also a maximum foot candle of um three-foot candles. Uh, there was no detailed lighting information included in this application, so it's a recommended condition of approval that prior to installation. But that the um Public Works Department provide um that information and that it meets the exterior lighting code requirement. And then uh finally, the non-residential design standards, they they do not apply as because this, the size of the hut just doesn't trigger those, the compliance with those standards. And then the final um criteria is that the project minimizes adverse impacts to the health, safety and welfare of the inhabitants of the surrounding areas and the city in general. The proposed project is not expected to negatively impact surrounding properties. Um, the property will be fully screened. Exterior security lighting will be required to meet the lighting code as I as I stated a second ago, and then the hours of operation will be restricted to daytime hours. Currently, the proposed uh timeframes are nine AM to four PM, Tuesday through Saturday. So um we did receive one written comment about the recycling center, and that was included in your packet. And in addition to that, the city held two neighborhood meetings, one onsite and one via Zoom. Questions about the project focused on traffic, the street configuration, project timeline, uh, sight lighting, noise, things of that nature. Uh, so you only have a consideration of one action item regarding this proposal. And your action alternatives are to prove, approve with conditions, deny or continue. And I'm recommending that you approve with conditions and those are listed on, um, well, sorry, findings. Findings and conditions are listed on page six of your staff report. And here's a a list, a short list of the suggested conditions, and then you see that the sight lighting is included in there as is um providing exterior building color samples for the uh community development director's review and approval at the time a building permit is submitted. So with that, um, I will stop sharing my screen unless, maybe I should just keep up the um the uh site plan here. So let me back up. Let's see. Oops, too far, too far, too far. Come on, scrawly thingy. There we go. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Excellent. Thank you, Gretchen. Um, we'll start with Commissioner Shaver, please.
Uh, thanks, Gretchen. On uh back a a page or two, you showed the uh, you know, the aerial view with, I think, a green line and what are the, um, where it says point three five acres and there's that sort of turquoise outline and then the yellow outline is, what do those represent?
So those uh represent property lines based on the assessor's records and it's not exact. Please, just please understand that. I think uh Matt might want to speak to this, so please, um, Matt, if you do have any additional information, I do understand.
For sure.
Okay, thank you.
So the yellow lines are actually the center lines on Google Earth.
Oh, sorry.
See the gray lines that are shaded back? Those are actually the property lines and this one matches up with the property lines pretty well. Um, and you'll see that the city of Lemon Springs also purchased a point six-two acre property to the north of this. So in essence, this property doesn't actually have any street frontage on it in any way. Um, it actually is just access through the other city of Lemon Springs parcel off of Thirteenth Street right away that ends five or six feet short of actually the property corner.
And that that nor- uh northernly property that the city owns um is how big?
Point six-two acres. It's uh seventy-five feet wide and plus or minus three hundred feet long.
Is there, is there currently any thought about what's happening there in the future? Other than parking for the for the hut attendant?
Hey Gretchen, can I have the screen for a sec?
Uh, yeah, how do I do that?
Um. I'll see if I can take it. You cannot screen share while other people are participating. Can you unscreen share?
Uh, I can stop sharing.
Yes.
That would, okay.
That'd be great. You can have it back.
I'm sorry. I see what you're saying. Okay, I'm with you.
I'll give it back. I promise.
No, no, that's okay. You can have it.
I don't know what you can see. Can you see a white? Uh, can you see a survey with my hands moving around?
Yes, we do.
So the property we were just looking at is this property to the left side of the page. So I rotated it to blow it up a little bit. This is the point three-five acre parcel. Um, the other parcel we purchased is this point six-two acre parcel that goes basically where School Street should be. School Street kind of lines up over here on the other side of Riverside Drive to the right-hand side of the page. We actually purchased this parcel at the same time uh for the same cost as one, some kind of thing. Other people, the neighbors have kind of pushed their yards into this property a little bit, which is fine. Um, what we'd be using for it for immediately is is that um as long as Terry Partt still says, okay, and she hasn't said one way or the other, because I probably haven't formally asked her is we'd like to make Thirteenth Street in this area a one-way street so you can only go west on it. Enter the property uh for the recycle center, you'd go around kind of in a clockwise motion. And then when you leave, you'd actually come through this property and enter Riverside Drive and use Riverside Drive as the access back out. Reason for that is, is one, there's going to be people coming in and out of here and I don't want to lump them all at Thirteenth Street. The sightlines at Thirteenth Street and Picken Avenue aren't the best, but the sightlines on Riverside Drive are pretty good. So people would come in on Thirteenth, they would leave on Riverside Drive. It'd be basically a one-way loop in and out. Riverside Drive would still function as a two-way. We put signage up to make sure people don't go the wrong direction. We trim a few trees that are have grown up in the Twelfth Street ditch to make sightlines at Riverside Drive and or Twelfth, whatever you want to call it. Picken Avenue better. So as for improvements for this uh whole section in here, there's been a lot of conversations, which is why I, we paid a little extra money to have the topography done. And you can see these are topography lines in here. This is fifty-seven eighty. This other dark line's fifty-seven eighty-five. So you know, it basically gains about seven feet across this area in here. I was hoping that this topo up here was a little bit shifted so we'd have a larger flat area. But there have been some thoughts about potentially this could be some parallel parking for river and fisherman access to the Rio Grande Trail, which is right here. This is the Rio Grande Trail corridor. Or something to that effect, but we haven't gone to council with that conversation as of yet. Um, I'm actually walking this property, I believe, Thursday with one of the residents back here with this map. Uh, so we can talk a little bit about what the residents would like to see. Um, and then we're going to come to council uh and probably have discussions about the use of it here in the near future. Once we get over every crisis, we currently have the COVIDs, the smoke, the water, um, then we'll have some time to barrel into this thing. Uh, but this is the two properties in question. Uh, property here, obviously the recycle center, this other property is just one we purchased. This property, just so you know, to the north is basically a useless piece of property. There's somewhere in the realm of fifteen or twenty uh utility easements that cross it. Our main sewer line for the city actually runs right down the middle of this thing, so you couldn't build a building there. You couldn't do any structure. But you could use it for parking. You could use it for the P A R K word. You could do other things with it. But right now, it's just going to be a one-way, we'll call it access road.
Great, thank you. Um, great, thank you. Um, one, one input I would have, I go down, um, Riverside often to get onto the Rio Grande Trail, so I would hope that that would be taken into consideration when, when that's developed. And I don't know if I'm one of the few that does that, or if a lot of people use that access, but just a thought that crosses my mind. Um, what, what does the, where does the attendant, uh, go to the bathroom?
So we did leave sewer and water, uh, taps. The old Western Petroleum site had a house that actually sat basically in this corner over here, if you remember it. Um, the water tap sits right here, the sewer tap basically sits right next to it. Um, we would probably pull the, pull a building permit for this and potentially, um, have that built in. Right off the bat, we probably wouldn't do that. We're kind of leaving this as an open dirt gravel area, the rest of this will be concrete and asphalt. Um, we probably put a, a port-a-lit out here for now. The attendant up at the recycle center, as it sits right now, only access they have basically to the bathroom facility is a port-a-lit that's out there also.
Okay, so maybe there's not any room for it, but there could be some irrigation there in the future, potentially.
So we have some space around the outside of it a little bit where we could run in either, oh, irrigation line that's basically attached to the fence, because we wouldn't use it in the wintertime, but it's on the inside, you wouldn't physically see it from the outside. Um, there's possibility, but due to funding at this point, we've got a grant, we have a little bit of funding out of the landfill. We're kind of keeping the scope of work as narrow as possible, um, to try to be able to get this in and get this functioning this year, which is kind of what council's direction was. You know, since twenty seventeen, when the recycling center went away, which was a very large debate, um, we've been trying to find another place within the middle of town that kind of functions. And since Western Petroleum was selling and we really wanted them to get rid of all the oil barrels and tanks and everything they had, it made sense to cooperate with them. They did all the removal, they've done all the remediation, um, and paid for all of that. And basically, we got the property for a really good deal. Um, and it fits right into the middle of town and the, the size need for the recycle center.
Yeah, I think, I think that's great, being able to bring that back into town. Um, what, what happens to the recyclables once they're collected? I, I, I hear all, people say, oh, well, they ju-, they just take it up and they just dump it in the dump. Um, so I'm going to take this opportunity to, to ask somebody that knows.
So it depends on what we have. Um, let me flip under a different screen here. Um, so this is the same thing that Gretchen was showing you a minute ago. Um, so we have a whole list of recyclables in here, I'll go through them very, very quickly. We have a recycling box for electronics, we do that up at the landfill and we'll probably do it in both locations. Um, we have a forty-yard recycling cans through here. So we'll have, uh, glass and co-mingled and cardboard and paper. Um, we'll have basically everything we have up at the recycle center moved down here. Um, with the glass and the co-mingle and everything, we send them off to the Murph and Eagle. So Eagle has a recycling center with a setup where they take smaller quantities of recycling and put it together, sort it out, and then send it off to a large recycling facility. Or, don't ask me what it's, it's for. Um, the cardboard, uh, sometimes we recycle that and sometimes we take it and bring it to use in our compost operations. Um, depending on what cardboard's worth, who wants it, um, we can use it for two different things. We can actually make compost out of it, which we do, uh, all year long, um, or we can recycle that. Um, when it comes to newspapers and everything else, um, we either recycle those that go to the Murph or we use them in our composting operation. So I guess the, the grander scheme of everything is either, either everything goes to the Murph and gets recycled, um, or we use it internally, the landfill, uh, for compost operations. And the other thing is there's this little white compost container down here. This isn't food compost, we haven't quite got there yet. Um, we're building a new compost operation up at the landfill right now. Um, soon enough, potentially, we'll have another container in here, we'll swap one of these out and we'll, um, probably work with Evergreen Zero Waste and be able to do food recycling or composting in there. Obviously, that's got to be a bear-proof container, um, that's a little more uh, animal drawing, uh, than most of the rest of these things, but it's something we can deal with. Uh, but we'd like to be able to have some food composting in here. This twenty-foot compost container at the bottom down here that I was just talking about, that's for anything else that people can throw in there, basically, the, uh, freezer boxes that most people throw away, the beer boxes, those kinds of things that you can't actually recycle. They fit in just between paper and cardboard, you can't quite recycle them, but we can compost them and we do. So, you know, you can bring, there'll be a whole list at the gate of things that you can bring in and where it can go. That's why we have the attendant to keep everything sorted out. Because once comp, once recycling becomes too co-mingled in, in the wrong containers, people will reject it. And that's when all of a sudden it goes to the landfill instead of actually being recycled, which is why we have a, a one-hundred percent staffed, uh, operation up at the landfill and soon to be at this location. We're actually moving that to this location.
Great. Thanks, Gretchen and Matt, very much.
All right, excellent. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Zippertley, please.
Thanks. I am, I'm really glad to hear that we're moving the recycle center, um, back into town. I think it's going to get a lot more use, which brings me to several questions I have. And I guess I'll just ask them all at once and probably, Matt, these are mostly for you. Um, so we've got, uh, all these really large containers. These do not seem to be the same containers we're currently using at the landfill, because I don't see any steps and ramps. Also, the ones that are up at the recycle center don't currently have roofs on them and you're implying these are covered. So that's question one. Are these the same, uh, forty-yard cans as we have? And if so, where are the ramps and the steps? Um, the next question sort of about the site layout. I'm wondering why we would have the two lanes of traffic cross each other. It might be useful to bring up the, the proposed site plan with the colors and the notes here. Um, but I'm wondering why we would, uh, pu-, cross traffic to pull into the facility and then have to kind of almost cross that pulling in traffic again to exit the facility. I see that the entrance road as now marked is twelve feet wide, which is the standard roadway. But the other one-way section is twenty feet wide and I'm assuming we're going to have to have cars parked there unloading things. Like, in this illustration, I see parking spots for only two cars. And if you look at the three D rendering that comes after this, it actually almost looks like a bit of a mess with cars trying to figure out where they're going to park. We need to realize they've got to open up the side doors and pull the bins out and, you know, shuffle things around and try to get the door shut. So I'm just afraid that we're going to have a, um, a little conflagration, uh, over there between the parking people and the people who are trying to, uh, enter and exit the facility. Um, also, in terms of the site plan, I am quite concerned that this pretty much entire area, except for the two southern corners, are intended to be paved in a non-permeable surface. And I'm concerned that we're going to have a lot of runoff coming off of here. And having spent a lot of time at the recycle center, I'm concerned there's also going to be a lot of plastic waste in such runoff, like plastic bags blowing into the trees. Um, you know, your cans blow out during the wind and then they're, you know, they're up against the fence. And where are we going to keep both the trash inside the recycle center? And what are we doing with, um, groundwater as it falls here is just going to runoff onto the adjacent property? Like, we, uh, we, we just talked about that. Um, also, I am questioning why we are showing three trash dumpsters here when we don't, we're not going to collect trash, right? This is a recycle facility. Um, and my one last comment is, last time I did go to the recycle center at the landfill, it appeared as though Margaret, who mans that station, had not been consulted for her opinions. And I would, if she has not yet been contacted, hope that she would be in the near future. Um, you can come back to me, I have a list here too, and I, um, appreciate your input. Thanks.
Other than the Margaret one, what was the comment right before that? Do you remember?
Yeah, why are we showing trash dumpsters?
God, thank you. I think I got the rest of them written down. You want me to get, can I do all of those at one time? Okay. Can you all see this screen where it says, shows 13th Street and all the dumpsters and everything?
No.
Huh.
Still on the, uh, we're still on the survey.
All right, let me, uh, let me start on the, the survey. We can start on one, answering one of your questions, actually. So the nice thing about this property is we went in and we, we took out the concrete that was in here and we re-graded it, got rid of all the soils, or actually Western got real soils. But if you see, it starts here and it grades this way.
Yeah.
So we've got seventy, eighty-one, eighty, seventy-nine. Over in this corner over here, we're going to drain all the water basically to this corner. So it's away from the residential property, it's draining towards the Rio Grande property. And what we'll do is we'll drop a dry well in here, uh, with a grate, so that any greases or oils or anything that kind of comes along with the recycling will go to a dry well location with sand in the bottom of it, um, so that we are doing a filtration process. Um, and then we'll come clean that thing out. We do that with all the dry wells and, uh, oil sand separators we have within the city facilities. So this would become a dry well in this location and all the water will just come to this location. So, yes, we're definitely handling stormwater, we'll do water quality within there. Um, then the next person downstream of, from us is the Rio Grande Trail that actually has a storm sewer system built into it and cross culverts. So any excess water will go to the Rio Grande and it'll cross it in like a normal fashion at that point. Uh, but we will have some water collection within basically this corner over here. So let me see if I can get rid of this and pop this other one up. Um, bear with me. There we go, and screen share. And this one. Let's see, share. Sorry, I thought if I flipped my screen while it was on, but apparently it locks into that screen, you can't flip other things. I learned something today. Can you all see the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so the way it's happening is that's why 13th Street, part of your cross, crossing traffic conversation, let's go to that one real quick. Um, is that's why you want to make 13th Street one-way. And then when you pull in, you pull into this, this twelve-foot wide lane. So you have all your clothing items here in those three trash cans that we'll get to in a minute. And then this, uh, extra recycling container here. So basically, you could pull out of the way and there's enough spots for these two stalls. Most time, these operations in this area are very quick. People come in with their clothing, they throw them in the containers, they move on. Um, or if they bring us trash, they throw the bags in and they move on. Um, so you'll kind of be greeted at this location by the attendant. They'll help you go to where you need to go. If you have to pay for something, they probably won't ask you to do it here. They'll say, go do your business and we'll meet you on the other side where I've got this twenty-foot lane over here and we can work out, you know, if you owe anything. Um, but the attendant's here to help kind of make the flow work better. Um, when you come around the corner, what we'll do is we'll actually stripe this as a twelve-foot outside lane and an eight-foot parking stall. So people are going to come in, they're going to come around the corner, they're going to park in the eight-foot stall. And then when they're ready to leave, if somebody's in front of them, they'll pull into the twelve-foot lane and they'll go around the outside of it. I apologize, we didn't add that to the site diagram, there's a few things I wish we had added, but we didn't. Um, but this is what is actually going to happen. We'll have a white stripe basically coming around this corner delineating. You park on this side and we'll put parking, uh, you know, text in that area in yellow. Uh, so the people know to park here, because, yeah, we, we want to get people in, it's going to get really busy. The old one was terrible, because you'd pull in, do your stuff, then you'd have to back up and three-point turn to get out of there. Um, and they actually had a few car accidents in that particular location. This one's supposed to be made nice and smooth. We'll probably back people up on a Saturday into this twelve-foot lane over here and they'll have to wait their turn. But at least they're not backing into each other, they're not kind of co-mingling while they're turning, they're just going around a loop. Um, and once again, they won't have to cross the traffic coming in, because we're going to send them out straight north, um, through this property to the north that we own, back to Riverside Drive. And we definitely will do some improvements on Riverside Drive. Some of the trees need to be trimmed, we need to do a little asphalt. Um, we're actually doing some asphalt work out there in a couple of weeks, because we're getting rid of the railroad tracks in that section and making a hard connection to the Rio Grande Trail and getting rid of those hazards in there. Um, Raft is letting us do that, so we're doing that work, so. Um, I'm going to go back here, twenty-foot wide striped runoff to the inlet. Uh, the trash dumpsters, we have these up at the, um, recycling center right now. We own three of them. Um, they're very popular. We charge a minimal fee for somebody if they want to. They're only creating one bag of trash a week, which a lot of people do, if they recycle properly. They can come here and for four bucks, they can throw that bag of trash away and then they can recycle for free basically everything else that they have. And what we'll do is we'll contract with one of the local haulers to come in on a weekly basis to pull these, which they are bear-approved containers, uh, they're already up at the landfill, which has a lot of bears. Um, and they don't get into them. So we'll have somebody come and haul these for us, whenever they need to be hauled out. But it provides that person that doesn't want to have curbside, they still have to drive all the way up to landfill to get rid of that one bag of trash. So in a sense, we're providing them a very easy location. Whether this is one, two or three containers, I don't know yet, we own three. Um, we'll probably start with one and see how popular it is in this location, but it's very popular up at the landfill. Um, so we haul one of these containers up to the top every few days. Um, so as I think that, uh, it was mentioned in the letter, actually, this part of your packet, you know, there's trash haulers all over town all week long kind of thing. Um, so we'll get one of them to haul these for us. And if it's not popular, we'll get rid of them and bring it back up to the landfill. But it's just an opportunity for somebody to not have to drive that fourteen-mile loop.
Mm-hmm.
The steps and ramps are not on here. What we're going to do is we're going to buy the metal steps that have the rollers. So you go up three steps and you're on a platform that's about five by five or whatever it is. Um, and then you'll use that to access it, because what King has found up there and what Margaret has found is if you get people too much space, then they just go to whatever door they want to and they throw things in. But if you start them on the backside of the container and you make them fill that area up and then you move them door by door to the front, we can get much more recycling in a forty-yard container. And these are forty-yard containers, that's the exact same size as the ones up at the landfill. Um, and they don't have roofs on them, it's just not drawn well. This, the triangular sliding doors, uh, that's on there. These are the exact same containers. We'll probably just move those down here, to be honest with you.
So we don't see the, the steps and platforms. And are you saying you just, well, basically one user at each of these containers at a time in terms of, is that why you're trying to limit the stairs and ramps? Because I see lots of people using each one of those, especially cans and bottles, all at once.
So these containers are double-sided. So there'll be steps and ramps on one side, and if we need to, we'll put steps and ramps on the other side, so that we can have two people accessing it and then filling the thing from the front to the back. Um, they really have found, and if that doesn't work for some reason, we can always adjust. I mean, if we needed to bring the giant ramps back and have people load it a whole bunch at a one time. Right now, with COVID, people are staying six feet away from each other, so they shouldn't really be on those at the same time anyhow. And we're not allowing them to be. In the future, we're all going to be a little more wary, so we thought that buying the ramps that are smaller and forcing people to fill the containers where we want them to be filled from the back to the front gets us way more recycling in that container before we then have to pay for it to go someplace.
Mm-hmm.
Some of these will get hauled up to the landfill, they'll get dropped and they'll be right, brought right back. Some will get hauled to the Murph and Eagle and they'll be brought right back. We only have a finite amount of these containers, um, because they're expensive and recycling is becoming less popular, obviously. Basalt has, uh, changed their philosophy on that, even Aspen has kind of changed what they're doing. Um, but we feel this is something we need to do for the citizens of City Glenwood Springs. And we, we draw people from Basalt and Rifle and everywhere, uh, to use the one up at the landfill currently. So these are forty-yard containers, we'll probably start out with a smaller metal version of these ramps, and if we need to migrate to something bigger, because we, we just can't control the flow in and out, then that's something that we'll adjust to in the future.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I was asking, because I have been at recycle when the truck came to, um, drop off, uh, the new container. And, um, it, it, they, they obviously backed straight in and I realized that might be a little bit more difficult here. So I was just kind of, um, looking for clarity on what is actually in between these that is not shown, so thank you for that.
And those ramps will make it easier for the truck to pull out of here. You're exactly right. Because we can pull those ramps away from it, they can load the container, they can bring it back, we can push the ramps back up against it.
Where do the ramps go when you pull them away?
We would just pull them to the backside and just get them out of the way.
Uh-huh.
They, they're like lows, you've seen the big tall things, you just push the little thing down, it rolls wherever you want it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
They're easy to move.
So the main part of your traffic circulation is based on the assumption that Riverside Drive will become a road?
Riverside Drive is a road?
Well, no, the connection from 13th Street here to Riverside Drive, you're pretty much counting on that.
Well, it's going to be an access drive and we'll build that ourselves, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be a twenty-foot wide, we'll probably put it in millings first, asphalt millings that'll kind of, they won't be dusty, so you could leave it the way it is right now, it'd be very dusty for the neighbors. We'll commit, make a twenty-foot wide access drive that's created out of four inches of millings, which we have lots of them, we use them all over for this type of situation. Um, and that still leaves it, we're not asphalting it, which becomes more permanent. And then decisions can be made on what do we really want to do with the seventy-five-foot property.
Okay, thanks so much.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Grosskopf, please.
Okay, cool. That was really interesting to hear all that. Thank you very much, Matt and Carolyn. Um, just a, one question is, it talks about a six-foot Um, just a one question is it talks about a six foot solid screening fence so that like in the renderings, it looks like a wooden fence. Is that, you know, I would like something from the bike path that really truly kind of is elegant. So is that what you're planning to do, Matt? Wooden fence?
I just changed my screen. Could it did a change on yours? Can you see the artist's rendering? Uh, Jim's rendering?
Provide.
Yeah. So we're looking at a six foot tall fence, whether it's a shadow box fence where the, the la- or the slats are on alternating sides. So there's a little bit of wind going through or it's just a solid, uh, kind of cedar fence, whatever it needs to be. Yeah, we want it to look really nice too. Um, basically from the trail, we don't want it to look like anything except for a nice wooden fence and a little vegetation in front of it. Um, the trail sits lower than, I don't know if you can see this viewer or not. It's from the Rio Grande back. Um, the trail sits actually lower than what this angle is. I'm not even sure you'll see the top of the containers. You'll see the little hut. Uh, for the attendant, because it'll be a little bit taller, but I'm not sure you even see the containers. So this is the intent is you don't see a recycling center. You just see a wooden fence like you would see in a residential zone.
Okay. And then I did really want to echo, um, Commissioner Shaver's comment about I think most people and kids use Riverside to get down onto the bike path. So you just really need to be mindful about that. I mean, I think that's more of a dominant use than a than a car use. Um, and people have that habit. So thank you.
Okay, excellent. Uh, any more questions to staff at this point? No, we'll see none. Thank you, Gretchen. Thank you, Matt. I'll, uh, open the public portion for this, uh, hearing. Anybody from the public here to, uh, comment on this, uh, location extent review for the city? Please raise your hand. And I see no one raising hands. So we'll bring it back to the commission. And I'm entertaining a motion and planning file 28 dash 20 consideration of a location. An extend application construct a recycling center.
Do we actually make a motion? I thought we were more informed. Sorry about that.
Now I think we have to approve it or deny it or continue it.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Based on.
Yeah. So it's planning item, oh my gosh, 2820, right? And then Page six findings, suggest findings, um, and conditions, page six.
Thank you. We have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
And a second, uh, this motion is to approve, uh, this recycle center. For the City of Glenwood Springs, any, uh, any discussion? Commissioner Wussel.
I'll just, I, um, echo a few of the other commissioners' comments and just saying that the fencing adjacent to the Rio Grande, that it be done with a, an eye for design and that we really make sure that it, it just conveys elegance and high quality. Just that it's well designed and looks good.
I think, I think that's our intent also.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Any more discussion? No? Commissioner Zippel.
Could we impose as a condition that the staff would kind of go pull bags out of the trees regularly or do we know if we already have that? That's one of my bigger concerns being right next to one of our most precious, highly used recreation areas that the bags flying into the trees. Um, maybe Matt can comment if he's allowed.
I'm sorry, that was a question that you asked that I did not get to. So the, the attendant will always show up a half an hour early and stay a half an hour longer than time it allows. Or the, we're open and that will be their purpose is to get containers open, get things prettied up. Uh, make sure if anything's blown around that it's picked up off the fence. Um, I would expect he or she to contact us. We can go get things out of a tree if we need to with a bucket truck. We don't want to be a blight on this area in here. The neighbors have been really nice. Um, and we don't want to take advantage of them by any means. So I think the intent is to keep everything nice and clean. At the end of the day, that attendant's going to close everything up. If anything's on the ground, they'll use a leaf blower or a broom or whatever it is to kind of create a pile and they'll put it in those trash cans or they'll recycle it if it's recyclable. So I think the verbally, I'm telling you this, this is the intent is to make this a really nice facility. King, King is very excited about it. Um, I believe we'll talk to Margaret about it and see if she has any other suggestions. Um, but, um, we're very excited to have this back in town. So we want to make it a nice thing.
Okay, excellent. Uh, if I see any more discussion, no? Okay, deal. I only have two things. First of all, excellent. I'd love to see this back in town and it's coming and it's been a long time coming. Um, and the other thing is my favorite is the, uh, $4 trash bag. That's absolutely fantastic. For $8, $8 to $12, you can have trash service. You just got to take it there. It's fantastic. Love it. So with that, I will call for the question to approve.
Sorry about that. Hold on, let me get back to my, um, Commissioner Wussel.
I will vote to approve. Yes.
Commissioners Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
Yes.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Grosskopf.
Yes.
And it carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, that concludes our, uh, new items for tonight. Now I was alerted today that, uh, Jen has a couple of follow up comments. On, um, allocation and extent review and, uh, Jen, please go ahead and, and, uh, fill us in.
So you have a couple of other staff members who you don't generally see at the planning commission, uh, here this evening. Uh, Steve Boyd, who's our COO, Brian Smith, um, who's our Parks and Recreation Director and, um, let's see, I think, who else am I missing?
I think Dan Roper is here as well.
I was going to say, did we have Dan Roper?
He's in the attendees list.
I think, um, maybe Alyssa can help us promote him. Um, so I think what we wanted to do was give you a, a bit of a heads up. Um, we have mentioned before that we anticipated that there would be more location and extent applications coming before you. A lot of, a lot of them related to the move of the MOC and the swiftness with which we needed to, um, get out of that building and, and get our staff members into other facilities. And, um, one of those is the Parks and Recreation, um, folks. Um, so I'm going to let Steve Boyd give you just a little bit of a heads up and Brian can answer some questions. What, what this is tonight is not an actual location and extent application. Um, it is more just a heads up of some, of some work that will need to take place in advance of an application coming to you. And we wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. And then also, um, I think Matt Langhorst also, um, would like to maybe just go through a couple of other quick highlights of things that will be coming. Um, and you know, uh, those are related, well, at least one is related to the, 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 the fire situation and kind of the emergency nature of that. So, um, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Steve Boyd.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Uh, yeah, I'm Steve Boyd. For those of you that I haven't met, there's a couple of you that I don't really know. Uh, I'm in administration here. Just wanted to give you a little bit of quick background on how we got here. Jen is right. You know, it, it stems from our MOC having structural problems. I mean, I think we all know that it was sinking and falling in on itself and um, there was a day when our structural engineer was in an executive session with us and he said, you know, I can't guarantee that this building is going to stay standing. I can't guarantee that we won't have a significant, you know, catastrophic structural uh, problem in this building and the game changed for us right there. You know, I mean, Carl was in the room and, and he told our council that, look, as your lawyer, you know, we've been warned at this point. Um, not only are we endangering people, but you know, we can give away our governmental immunity and you know, get the hell out, right? So the order from council came down right away. And so that kind of set off a little bit of a scramble on our part, trying to get everything together. And it wasn't just, we're going to talk about the parks building um, here in a second, but it wasn't just parks, right? We have, we had fleet in that building. Our streets department was in that building. Our in-house work crew SWAT was in that building. Electric was in there. And we couldn't find a facility that we could just move into, right? We had to cobble together four or five different locations. And so we went out and we got those together and uh, we knew that we were going to have to do some work on some of them. It just wasn't a perfect fit everywhere. And you know, particularly in the parks, uh, building on soccer field road, we knew that we're going to have to get a little bit creative and, and do a couple of things. But we made the move, we got through the winter and then, you know, as we got into the springtime, ready to kind of get that work together. Uh, you know, this COVID thing hit, which changed the game for us again, you know? So we're in a situation right now where we've got to move forward and Brian and his team need, uh, a place to operate from. Uh, so we have to take some steps forward here, but we've got these constraints, you know, because of COVID, both financially and time wise. You know, uh, some of this work we're going to have to do in-house, which means Matt's crew's got to get involved in that. And they're not exactly sitting around looking for things to do um, these days. But Brian's got essential responsibilities as Parks and Rec Director. And I, I just wanted to kind of get on and tell you guys, thank you for you know, helping us here, giving us a little bit of room on this one. You know, we take very seriously the idea that we want to follow our own code. And I can tell you that, you know, if we thought it was realistic for Brian to get done what he needs to get done, or if we could find another solution to this, we wouldn't be standing here. So I'll stick around if anybody has any questions, uh, for me, but just wanted to say thank you and, and, uh, be available for other questions if they come up. So I'll throw it over to, uh, Dan and, and, um, Brian, who are smarter than I am about exactly what we're trying to do over there.
I thank you. Uh, good evening, Commissioner. I, uh, I'm Brian Smith. I'm the Parks and Recreation Director. I apologize that one of my first appearances before you is in such unusual circumstances. I was actually talking with Trent. And we were reminiscing about how terrible Parks and Recreation has been of, uh, vetting our projects through the planning process. I think in the seven major projects I've done since I started with the city about three years ago. Outside of just general, uh, facility improvements and additions, not one of them has actually gone before, uh, planning and zoning. So I, I hope this is a good start to a uh, good relationship, um, between planning, zoning, parks and recreation, although our, our first appearance is a little unusual. So, uh, like Steve, said, we, you know, we had a little bit of a crunch moving out of the MOC and into this building. Um, we looked at several different properties. Uh, Matt really helped us to identify this one that had the potential to work for us. It's about two acres. Uh, we knew right away we'd have to make some improvements to the site in order for it to work operationally for the department. Um, we have a detention pond in the rear of the building and also in the front. Uh, the rear one takes up about a quarter of that lot size. And so, um, what we're doing in this year is to, uh, do some site grading, um, excavation installed of about a, uh, 690 cubic foot dry well and some drainage lines as well as, uh, putting in stormwater mitigation. Um, we'll also be continuing site improvements, which will go through all the, um, the, uh, permitting process and then planning process, uh, through into next year. With, uh, putting in a single block wall, we'll put in curb and gutter, both in the front and back. Um, we'll be putting on a build and building addition about 1,800, uh, square feet for, uh, the garage and then we'll be adding on some, some, uh, office space. Those landscaping, uh, parking and some lot lighting as well. So just kind of a little overview of the, the whole project. The, the cost of the project is just under a million dollars, about $938,000. We can bring that down by about $542,000. By doing some of that work in-house. And so Matt and, uh, Jake and, and their staff have really scrambled with their schedule to be able to open up some time for us. To be able to do that in-house this year. We're, we're kind of held to what their availability and schedule is as, as far as the, um, the grading and site prep is, which is what we're looking to do right now. Um, based off of, uh, some of the recommendations and, and, um, the geotechnical investigation from, uh, CTL Thompson and also Adolfo with Glenwood Structural. And, uh, Civil did for us. So, so we're on a little bit of a crunch time, timeframe table to do that. And then I hope that we'll be able to vet the rest of the project improvements for the site, um, through an appropriate location extent permit process. So that's just kind of a, a quick overview. The, the grading work based off of Matt's availability with his staff, we're looking to do that, uh, in this next month in September. And, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, Dan, our park superintendent can ask, answer any questions you might have about operations of the site, or if you have any, uh, questions about the, the work or schedule, Matt can jump in as well.
Great. Thank you. Uh, my question is where is the site?
The site is at 191 Soccer Field Road. It's right across from the Glenwood Middle School. On the north side of town.
On the north side. Okay. All right, cool. Excellent. Thank you. Any, uh, any questions? From the commission? Commissioner Grosskopf.
Yeah. So is the site, um, oh, there's a building and I forget the name of the company, Electric Something. Is that the site?
It should be Douglas Solar.
Yeah.
And so you have quite a bit of land there. Is that true?
The site's about two acres of, of what we've purchased. And then, um, there's a, an additional, uh, distribution center, uh, just, uh, just on the north side that has a lot of, of land. We've eyeballed it. We even approached them for purchase of that property. They weren't interested at the time, but something we'll keep our eyes on for, uh, expansion for, um, city operational use.
And I know you're just sort of sharing plans and expressing urgency and I understand all that, but so eventually that two acre site. What's your big vision of what that's going to look like? Maybe I'm just, it's too much coming at me. So I apologize. What, what is your big vision eventually that that's going to look like?
Sure. Yeah. Totally understandable. Um, there's not going to be a lot of change into what the site looks like, um, from today. We're simply going to be installing some dry wells and paving over, uh, those, uh, detention ponds in the front and the back of the building. Like I said, the, we have a detention pond in the back that takes up about a quarter of that lot space. And so we need all that footprint to be able to, um, store materials, uh, city vehicles, um, have parking for staff. Uh, our, our parks department grows by about, um, double during the summer season as we bring on part-time and seasonals to help with, uh, trash removal and public restrooms and trail work and um, improvement projects, uh, mowing, irrigation, all that kind of stuff. So, um, this year we were, we were um, starting at the beginning of the year to start the process for all this. And then COVID hit and everything blew up. We lost all of our capital and, um, our ability to, to kind of move forward on this. And, and so we found ourselves in a weird situation. However, that we were saved a little bit by also having, uh, we had 120 of our staff laid off in the department. And so the parking needs weren't there this year. Um, we only had a handful of people trying to manage the whole park system. So as far as staffing wise, we were able to operate out of the building just fine this year. But, um, as we come into winter, we need to expand that garage and then we need to add on a little bit of space for next season when we bring on our full staff regimen.
And are you going to be fencing the property?
We will. Yeah. We'll be putting up some security fence. That'll be, uh, towards the end of the project.
Of this first phase or are you meaning?
No, not of this first phase. There'll be a second phase next year.
Hey Brian, would it be helpful if I tossed up the, the aerial of it so they could kind of see where it's at and what it looks like?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks, Matt. If you want to talk through that too.
And, and I don't know that we need to go into so, so much detail. We will, we will be, um, bringing this item to you, but we didn't want you to see work happening on the site and then, and, and not have a heads up essentially. But yeah, I mean, Matt, bring it, bring it up. Go ahead. Yeah, I agree with what Jen just said. Maybe we're okay for now. So let's take a quick look.
Can you see this aerial?
Yes.
Okay. So as Brian said, you know, here's the, here's the middle school right here. Um, there's an apartment complex here. This is the old Douglas Soler building that Parks has purchased and it's, uh, what is it? 3700 square feet? I, I don't remember.
Yeah, it's about.
You know, the, the property's already fenced. It has a fence adjacent to the neighboring property up here. It's kind of a white fence. Um, these are, I believe, wooden fences and the front one is kind of a chain link fence. And I know, uh, P and Z hates, plenty of Christians hate chain link, but that's what's there right now. Um, and as you could see, the, the asphalt in the whole property is, is kind of falling apart. Um, this is the pond that Brian was talking about. Um this is the pond that Brian was talking about. Um that needs to be, it it takes up a huge section of this property in here. Um and a dry well is an option. So uh Brian was right, S G M started designing this whole entire thing. It it got kind of expensive. Um I became S G M, which is not the best option, but it's a good one. Um so it kind of redesigned. It said, hey, if we grade it like this, we can open up this area in the back here. We can get millions in asphalt in here and kind of get you into a good position for the winter time and the start of the spring. Um and that will give Brian a lot of time to kind of get the the drawings together and what he wants to do, because that, he was talking about an eighteen hundred square foot expansion. That'd kind of be on the front of the building over here. Um this fence line would move up and then this would become very, very usable area for him. And we'd still meet all those water quality uh retention and um water quality and retention issues that this pond had. We'd just be doing it in a dry well. Um and engineering has already approved the size of that dry well because the property came with a much larger site plan. Um but they agreed that the impervious area for the old site plan versus the new one was kind of equivalent. So we just sized it to the old drainage calculations. Um and parks or streets can put that in, parks will help. Uh but streets has some time opening up here pretty soon that we can get in here, really regrade this whole thing, make it very usable for Brian um and do it at a fraction of the cost you would cost for a contractor to come in and do it. So uh we're more than willing to help. We love helping. Um and this is, this is a great thing for parks, I think. So and and this is kind of the area Brian was talking about. Maybe maybe if we could talk uh this gentleman into, which probably we never will because he loves his uh his orchard up here, but um but he has a little bit of expandability for us if he would be willing to share. And I'll, does anybody have any questions on this? I could stop sharing.
I think we're good unless I see somebody jump in, but thank you very much. Uh Commissioner Russo.
I just had one question. It's it's so silly, but do we have a sign up yet? I know for a long time there wasn't a sign that indicated it was a city building. Are we there yet?
We we have a sign designed and it's waiting to be put up. We'll probably put it right where that uh front front of property detention pond is once, once we get that site graded out and and paved over.
That'll be great to see. Thank you.
And I'll match our new park signage style that you see in some of the new parks.
Cool, thank you. Any uh any additional questions at this point, since this was just kind of thrown at us, but it all makes sense. We just wanted to make sure when we see dirt moving around that, hey, we didn't get to see this, but it's all good. We will see it eventually, so.
Yes, and I apologize. I I hate to just throw things at you in in kind of a scramble. Um but we will try to vet the process properly as we go along, once we get this initial grading work done.
But but at this point, it's all about getting it going and saving money, right? Good, let's do it. That's fine. Uh any other, any other question? Any any additional comments from you guys or are we good for tonight? I think it looks, looks good to me. So thank you very much for those informations. Thank you. Thank you, guys. And uh I think I'm gonna call for a very short recess and we'll reconvene with the uh workshop. So let's say, what is it, eight thirteen? Can we do uh eight twenty? Okay, cool. I'll see you then. Well, moving right steps. What do you know? Okay, everybody back? Close enough. We'll uh we'll just get going since this is a workshop. Uh called order, second half of the Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and we'll jump right into our uh discussion item A for tonight, which is amending regulations related to medical marijuana business, retail marijuana business and marijuana cultivation. And I think that Gretchen and Trent, I think both of you had information last time.
All right, I'm I'm gonna start off.
Okay.
So you're right, this is a continued discussion from uh the July twenty eighth meeting. And uh to continue that discussion, you had asked uh for um some additional information. The first is you had wanted a comparison of Glenwood Springs regulation and those of other Colorado communities. In your staff report, I provided um a spreadsheet showing sixteen other jurisdictions across the state, um just randomly, fairly randomly selected and a a wide range in uh populations. So um just to run through, uh other than the two of them, uh Newcastle and Avon that do not allow marijuana uses, I'm just going to really briefly run through some highlights. So you'll see from the chart that three of them include, three of those jurisdictions include buffers from parks or playgrounds. Four have a buffer from residential uses or abutting um residential zoning districts. Seven of them limit, actually set a cap on the number of establishments. Eight have a buffer from drug alcohol treatment centers or mental health facilities or hospitals and halfway houses. Nine of them require a one thousand foot buffer from schools. And nine require a buffer from childcare uses. So um moving on, you had also asked the approximate number of new establishments that could be approved in Glenwood Springs with our existing buffering requirements. Uh thanks to Trent, he um provided the maps that were in the staff report. And we figured that approximately ten additional establishments could be approved in Glenwood Springs, bringing our total to nineteen. Next, you had asked about the taxes generated from existing facilities and when establishments come online. Uh that's a little harder number to get to, uh but based on um finance reports uh through twenty eighteen, you can see that from twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen, we've certainly had an increase in revenue. But twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen, it's been relatively flat and in fact did decline in twenty eighteen. And then lastly, um I believe it was uh Commissioner um shocked or asked if other communities have rolled back their marijuana regulations since approval and that was super hard to determine. Uh and it, in fact, it would, it would take me a long time. I'd be happy to do that, but um I'd need to contact each of the jurisdictions because that was hard, harder information to find um on websites. So um with that, uh Trent, please add anything that you want to add or um we can just um open it up to general discussion.
Um I don't know that I have too much more to add, Gretchen, unless folks had, you know, specific questions about the various uh locations that we that we've mapped out and tried to emphasize with the the circles in the staff reporting.
Okay. So I'll turn that back over to you, Marco.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh thank you, guys, for uh for the all the work you put into this. This is very informative. Um just to see a comparison, at least for me, I I you know, I I don't necessarily want to copy what other people do, but it's always good to know what what's going on out there. And I'm I'm trying to really focus in on these numbers here quick, but if anybody has questions, please raise your hand. Um we'll we'll do it with raised hands so we don't have the echo and multiple voices and all that kind of stuff going, so.
Um Marco, I I wanted to um ask a question, too, because just before the meeting, um Dan Sullivan um asked if he might be able to speak. Uh and I told him that we don't normally do that, but normal is way outside of our ballpark right now. So I uh just consider that. Um he wanted to present some information to you.
Um com- Commissioner, would you feel the need to listen to Dan quick? Shall we do that? To get some more input? Okay, excellent. Um why don't we go ahead and let Dan speak? Uh please state your name and address for the record and and tell us a little bit who you are.
Uh thank you, Commissioner. Hopefully you guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
Chair, I'm sorry, Marco. Um Dan Sullivan, uh the Green Joint, um owner of ten thirty Grand Avenue, Glenwood Springs. Um it's a pleasure once again to be in front of you guys. Um and I I obviously the guy that probably brought this up uh a couple of months ago to council and asked if if it wasn't time for us to visit this issue. Um I I'm not able to, I don't think in my uh attendee role here, I'm able to share a screen. Um but I folded over to Gretchen and to Jen, um kind of a little baby spreadsheet, if that's available to be popped up, so uh the Commission can uh review.
Can we do that, Gretchen?
Yep, just uh Dan, what you, go ahead and I'll I'll get.
Super, thank you. Um so uh just a little, by way of a little bit of background, um we're obviously located here on Grand and Eleventh. Um we're, next month will be eleven years in business here in Glenwood. This was our first location. We're kind of the dominant brand player uh in the greater Roy and Fork Valley from Aspen to parachute. Um understand the industry well, understand the nuances of the various local municipalities and jurisdictions and what their intents are. And um you know, it's been an interesting ride. Uh what I'm finding as we try to uh grow and build our business is that there's a lot of walls built around many of the jurisdictions out there. Um I spent two years traveling many, many times to Steamboat Springs to be stonewalled um by the, you know, the the three local licensees that were able to convince council there that um there was no reason to, in fact, increase beyond the three, and that's a community of fourteen, fifteen thousand. Um and I just wanted to make sure you guys clearly, it's interesting and I appreciate the 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 great efforts that Trent and Gretchen went about to try to pull this together for you, looking around the state, but I really want to focus from up valley to down valley, the greater Roy and Fork Valley. That's where I live and work. That's where you guys live and work. And obviously, um I I just wanted to try to create some comparisons as to what's happening in each of these communities. If we start up valley in Aspen, you have, you know, a very wide open capitalistic uh Aspen being a little bit of the Aspen being a little bit of the party town, whatever, has eight stores. It's gone up a little bit from that and down a little bit from that, but it's been fairly consistent at that number for the last few years. And I looked at the year-round population, not visitors, but the, you know, what, what Google at least could bring up as far as population, and tried to create a relationship between the number of population and the stores. And that's what you're seeing here. So we see that Aspen is an open market, but it kind of self-heals itself to some degree. But its number of stores to population ratio is very low, 900. Basalt, very tight market, they had some capped at only two stores in a population of almost 4,000 plus visitors. So the stores to population ratio, there's almost 2,000. Carbondale, currently three folks, three licensees out there that are active. Glenwood has seven active. There have been a couple more issued, but they did not elect to take. And you actually see that we're meeting at 1425, more than the supply-demand ratio is required. Newcastle, of course, is not allowed, as was mentioned. Silt has two, but I don't see a whole bunch of folks running over to Silt to try to open a shop there. Rifle has a max of three, and there are three players there, including, we're one of them. And, but the Rifle's population is very similar to Glenwood. So it's interesting to see, it's almost double at three. And Parachute has put a max of 10 on for six active players. So you have a total of 31 active licensee recreational marijuana stores in the valley from, from top to bottom, greater will, and, and an average of about, you know, one store for every 1,600, 1,700 folks. What's interesting to me is that six of those eight in the greater Roy and Fork Valley towns or jurisdictions have a cap or are not allowing, obviously with the case of Newcastle. So I guess, and thank you for putting that up, Gretchen, I really appreciate it. I just wanted to share that it, I don't have a level playing field in, in some many other markets. I'd love to have a store in Basalt. There's only two licensees allowed, I'm not one of them. It, I, I'm getting pelted, and we see significant revenue decreases. Not that this is your problem necessarily. It's a gapless environment and free market, and we enjoy a great brand and a great presence. And so those, those are grapes here. But there comes a time when those that have been here for 11 years have put in the good corporate neighborly, tried always to do the right thing, have the right kind of environment, allow folks to come to Colorado. And trust me, it's very true, our tourism loves cannabis. And so I, I think there comes to a point when, when enough is enough. We don't need 30 liquor stores, we don't need 19 pot stores. There comes a point when you can kind of draw a line in the sand. And yeah, it's not like the revenue, the tax revenue is going to increase, it's not. As a matter of fact, through COVID, we've seen significant decreases, and it's been, it's been a trial. And I loved how Joanna with the Daily Red said to the, I don't know if you guys saw the Denver Post, you know, what's next, an asteroid? But I, I would really like for the town to consider enough's enough. We don't need to pack every little bit of corner. I mean, I've lived through all the up and downs of every location of every store that's in existence today. I've walked it, I've seen it, I was there before they were, I understand it. I think we're at a good balance point. I don't think we have to worry about, the city will certainly not lose out on tax revenues without having any more. It's just now I'm diluting and metering out. And as one that has tried to give back to the community, it's frustrating for me to see this kind of go unbridled when I can't use the same rules that others are, impeding on my space, so to speak, if you will. So anyway, I'm, I'm not sure of the exact direction if this is going to be a P&amp;Z commission recommendation, goes back to council or if it's a group thing. But I'm very interested in having a little bit of, of safety net around our business and the staff we employ and the reputation we put in place. And we, we love Glenwood, we love everything about the Roy and Fork Valley greater, and we're here to stay. I just want, not everyone's level playing field, and gosh darn it, I'm, I'm ready for a loving, a level playing field here in Glenwood. And I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Thank you so much, Dan, very informative. Thanks for showing up tonight. I see there's two other hands, one is you, and then there's one more. Let's, let's do, do you guys have, Commission, do you guys have questions to Dan? Based on, or want to know about the business or anything? Okay, we'll see. Now, the only, the only thing I want to know, Dan, is, is you, you, you said you were the first one here?
The continuous, we were a few weeks behind what was down at Seventh Street, but that ownership has changed out, so I meant from the continuous, from the beginning, still standing, yes. We've seen incredible amount of change over the last 11 years.
And, and every time a new store came in, you obviously lost revenue.
Um, for mostly on a temporary basis. You know, consumers are a little promiscuous sometimes. None of us have just one restaurant we go to. We have, you know, three or four favorite restaurants, and we have 10 outside of that that we ping based on whatever. And I get that, and so I'm not trying to be hoggish. But, but there's no question, yeah, when, when, when there's consistent add-on, particularly players from the, the front range that are well ensconced in a very deep population environment, we, I elected not to be in the front range. I didn't want, I, I love our quality of life here, and so I didn't want to be doing all that kind of stuff. So we kept our focus really here on the Western Slope. Others from the front range have seen this as a cherry-picking opportunity and are starting to try to come in all over the greater Roy and Fork Valley. And, and that's frustrating to me because I don't have the same opportunity of being a local, of convening it in Basalt. I should have a store in Basalt. We have a great product, we have a great brand, we have great people, and I can't get into Basalt, that's wrong. Meanwhile, it's, it's open field day in Glenwood. That's not, that's just not fair from my perspective, so.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Sorry if I'm passionate, I appreciate it, Marco.
That's all good. Any, any questions to Dan at this point? We'll see none, well, thank you, Dan. We'll move you, we'll move you on mute for this time being, and then I got MGB. And I'm not sure who you are, so please.
Yeah. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hey, my name's Matt Bennett, I live at 796 Castle Valley Boulevard in Newcastle, Colorado. And I'm sorry to comment on a Glenwood Springs meeting, but as your eloquent speaker before just pointed out, we don't have any pot shops in Newcastle, so oftentimes I go to Glenwood, and I'll say one place I never go is the Green Joint, and you probably just heard why. It's a guy who owns the place, but yet he wants to put a cap on the market. I don't get that, like, I had a, I, I don't get that at all. I mean, you have so many great stores in Glenwood. I, I mean, this guy is clearly scared of the competing market, not to mention the competing market would be a place called The Kind Castle. And every time I go and pick up friends and family from the Grand Junction airport, man, I tell you what, it's Chick-fil-A and Kind Castle. And y'all wouldn't let that place move in because of these reasons, for whatever reason, I don't know. When you have a place next door to it called Stinker with a skunk on top. I mean, limiting the number of pot shops and you're having a guy bend your ear who owns a pot shop in town? I mean, I don't know, like, what else I need to say, man? Like, I love marijuana. I love The Kind Castle's marijuana. Like, don't let some guy who would suffer from the competition tell you how to run the show. Like, I hope that's not the case. Like, yeah, the Green Joint's cool, it has a pretty building, but trust me, I've smoked plenty of their weed, and it's not that great. If you want good stuff, go downtown. I mean, to say, hey, I don't want to have, I want to level the playing field, let your green speak for itself, bud, all right? So that's all I have, man. I think it's absolutely ridiculous that y'all are having this conversation to limit the number of business in town. Let me ask you this, all the businesses that y'all work for, I'm sure it would be nice to suppress the competition, but that's not how America works. So thank you, let's legalize weed and let it be free and not let have some pot store owner who should know better. You should, you know, promote the product and promote the science behind it, not try and tell people not to move into the area. I mean, come on, I mean, use half of a brain. Anyways, that's all I got to say. Thank y'all for hearing me out, I respect what you do, peace.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. All right, let me see here, we're gonna do this, and we'll bring it back to us, and we'll start with Commissioner Russo.
Firstly, I actually wanted some suggestions from the, the Green Joint's owners on what he felt like was an appropriate venue for, for limiting. And I don't know, isn't, you know, this is a workshop, so it's open dialogue, correct?
Well.
I don't know.
I don't know, I think we should.
I was trying to go fast and raise my hand, and I missed it.
I'm sorry, I missed it too. I think maybe we should just talk amongst us for now.
That's fine.
See, see, see how we feel, and, and, and I'm just gonna throw this question out there is, how many pot shops? And I'm, I'm talking, I guess we're here to talk about medical, retail and cultivation. And cultivation definitely, in my opinion, does not, is not part of the other two business-wise. So I'm, I'm strictly talking about dispensaries, where you go in and you, and you purchase. How, how many should Glenwood have? Is, is that the road we're, we're going on, is to limit, to cap? How many Glenwood should have? Or should we, should we keep working with distances and increase or decrease or whatever? I'm going through these distances, and some of them are very, very lenient, and some of them are very strict. So I'm just throwing this out there, and see you at the commission. Thanks. Commissioner Brozka.
Yeah, I was pretty surprised to see Trent's work here. That, that given all the, the current distances, we could get up to 19. That's a bigger number than I've ever.
I agree.
I think just, just looking at all this, we're at nine. And then there's some more approved, if I got it right. I'm, I was trying to, I don't totally see that, but, but we, I know we're more. Again, Trent?
Seven and nine, seven existing, nine approved.
Okay, so it's not 10 approved, so we're at nine approved. And we could get up to 19, because you could add 10 more under the current distances. And I do think that, that's a big number. It's way exceeding Aspen, for example, it would bring our per-cap numbers, you know, shown by the speaker, you know, by half, right? And so I don't know how to do it any other way, if we're gonna talk about distances. Seems to me that that's not very fruitful. So I think basically the commission needs to decide, are we interested in a number? And give that feedback to council, or, or are we not? And so I would posit that that's kind of the mission tonight.
Thank you, Catherine. Commissioner Russo.
I'm wondering if there's a possibility to merge the two? And because I am in, in total agreement that, that statistically to have 19 with our population seems excessive. And I think that if we could limit the number and also maybe take, I mean, when I look through this spreadsheet, so many of the other communities have much more restrictive distancing measures in areas that we, that I, I think we, we, it was an oversight that we didn't include those as well. The childcare facilities, I think parks, I think there's a handful that would make a lot of logical sense to create more distance, which then I wonder how much, if you would be able to have, I guess, what is it, 10 more? Because I wonder if by just creating those distances, you would eliminate more of those locations.
Correct. Right. Commissioner Shaver.
Well, it, it's interesting to see how other communities have done this. And like Ingrid mentioned, I was just trying to look at this map, the, the overall map that has been put together, I believe Trent did that, and which is informative. Thinking about including parks into the mix. One community, I think it was 175 feet from a park, which isn't a great distance, I guess, compared to, you know, the other distances. But it seems like that would be a huge limiting factor to the number of locations that would be available in the city and therefore limit the overall numbers. You know, I think in, in my experience in applications that have come before us, there have often been complaints about, you know, having more shops in town. And I don't know, you know, if that's just an outspoken few or if there's a overriding consensus in that regard. But it does seem like that, that there should be some limits set. And I think the question then is, do we do it by increasing distances or adding locations that we, we permit, you know, pot shops from being nearby? How do we do that? I don't have a great answer for that, but it seems like these are our tools that we have available to, to try to control the, the industry.
Quick, quick question to Trent. After the special meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, did you, did you add in the Meadows possibility?
I did not, but as you know, there's a note on that section of the map that, that includes that kind of as, as an assumed, you know, location that's forthcoming. And we expect that you'll hear that application at the October meeting.
Right, and I'm, and I'm not saying that there will be a pot shop there, but with, with just one possible location, the Meadows is rather large, is there room for another?
I, I would say that there would still be room for another to West End and the Meadows, which, you know, stretches, you know, pretty close to, you know, the Raffin and old MLC property.
So that could push us to 20?
Well, no, that would be included in the 19.
Oh, that would be.
I, I included, I included both a, a West Meadows and an East Meadows kind of section there.
Okay, that's, that's what I was curious about, okay. Okay, Commissioner, what else? I, I, I like the Crested Butte. Schools, public, private, I would include the childcare what we have, and then the retail and medical marijuana facility that we have, the 900 feet, but I would add the parks to it. And just to be, the first one to say it, I put a cap of 10 on it for Glenwood and leave it alone.
Trent, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we have any non-recreational stores, just medical only?
We have some that are a combination of, of medical and rec, but no, no med only. They've all been converted to, to HPOS.
Do you think there should be different regulations for the two different kinds? Catherine?
No, I was just real curious because just wondering about that medical argument as a carve-out, but it sounds like there's just not the business model that makes sense for that, just given, given kind of what we see and what I've seen come through. So I, I was more just wondering if there was anybody still doing it, just as a, you know, a medical shop.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shaver.
I, I have heard complaints about cultivation facilities, and, and I don't remember how they're controlled, we, we haven't talked so much about that, but they, I know they put in suppression systems that are designed or supposed to reduce the, the odors that come from them. But, you know, having ridden my bicycle out Deveraux numerous times, it's, they don't seem to work very well. And I've heard complaints from people that are clear across the river in the interstate, quite a distance away, and they've complained about the odors from those facilities. And so I guess that should, it seems like that should be part of our conversation, and is there some weight of enforcement for that? That problem?
I agree with you, George, I think it should be part of the conversation, but should the cultivations be included in the retail aspect of it? Or should that be completely different? Or should that be completely different, different rules and regulations?
Well, I think i- in some cases they're combined, right? They're, they're cultivation and, and retail in the same facility. But it does seem.
Close to rehab. Two.
The two on Deveraux, is that right?
Okay.
So, um, you know, I guess, I, I think it must be, it would have to be a separate conversation. Vis a vis the odors. I mean, I, I don't know if there's any way you could have a complaint about somebody having a business like that, if it doesn't impact you, uh, in any way, so.
What is the current repercussion if you smell skunky for most of the year?
The ultimate, the ultimate repercussion is that you, um, you could lose your, you could use your, lose your special use permit. Um, the one that we're having problems with right now was reviewed and approved underneath the old code, and so it doesn't actually have a special use permit. But that being said, the development agreement that they had signed says that no order shall um, go beyond the property boundaries. Well, clearly, they go way beyond the property boundaries, so um, it is, to, to be quite honest, very difficult to enforce, but we, um, are currently taking enforcement action right now.
So, so there were complaints, you had a certain amount of complaints and then you take action?
Yes.
Okay, well, how many complaints?
Well, over the years, I haven't counted them up, um, recently. Uh, so what's happened in the past is that I would get written complaints and then write an enforcement letter. Uh, they, the owners would quickly fix the system. And then, you know, weeks or months later, the system would, would break down again. And right now, um, we had verbal complaints and are acting on the verbal complaints and also personal, um, you know, city staff, uh, complaints as well. So that's what we're acting on.
And, and is there, is there a fine system? Is there fines in place since we?
No, it's, it's the same as the fine structure for everybody. Um, you know, it could be up to a thousand dollars. For every day of the, uh, uh, offense.
Okay. Okay, cool. Uh, Commissioner Zippel.
So when, um, city council sort of brought this to us to discuss, we sort of wondered what it is they're actually, um, asking us to do. So I think, um, we have, we could look at this two ways. One, we're trying to protect our town's image and not seem like a weed town to tourists and especially people who are not part of the demographic who goes to these places. So I, that could be one reason why we're being asked to, uh, curb the number of establishments. Now, if we really are trying to protect the residents and people of our town, I think that we could look to the, uh, comparison chart and see that maybe adding setbacks from parks or especially alcohol and drug rehab places, um, might really address, um, some of our social concerns where I, whereas I don't quite get daycare centers. Like, do we think five-year-olds are gonna try and go buy marijuana when there's clearly like plenty of checks at the door and things? So we really are trying to protect our more um, vulnerable populations. I would consider increasing setbacks to things like parks and sort of halfway houses and rehab. But, um, you know, we did in the last conversations, we're saying, well, what, what does city council really want? So I, though we got the answers to lots of our other requests, thank you to, um, Gretchen and Trent. I don't believe we ever got the answer to that question.
I think you're correct, but I, I think just having the discussion we're having and just let things bubble out, but I, I think they wanna know what we think about this. And because we see the special use permits first, we see the, the applications for these kind of things and, and like the one near Stinker, you know, that, that's our deal first. And so we, we, we approached that before they do, and, and I think they just wanna know what the, what's it feel like for us to be out there and getting those and hearing, instead of, I have to reference that again, instead of, hey, let's look at this, the merit of this application versus, oh, we have enough pot shops, we have enough pot, that wasn't the discussion. We, we looked at, does it fit there? That was the discussion, but we hear all the other stuff. So to them, it's, what do you hear? What should we do? So that's how I feel about this. They want us to look into this to see how we feel about this and what's our experience with this. Uh, Ingrid.
So to kind of piggyback on what other people have said, I wonder if we could just add to our five hundred foot buffer for K two, K through twelve schools, we could add just maybe more language similar to Steamboat that says schools, college seminaries, childcare facilities. Um, but then also add alcohol, drug treatment facilities, and then also parks. And I know that's pretty broad-reaching, um, but I think that in, what it does is twofold. It does exactly what you just said, Marco, is that we're not putting limits on businesses. We're actually saying, you know, if you can find a location that fits this and meets our aesthetic and community goals here, um, more power to you to run a business. We're not gonna limit that. But in turn, it just says, these aren't good locations for you to run a business like this.
So, so you're saying no cap?
I'm saying no cap and I'm saying stronger restrictions on locations. So that it, it, it actually in turn makes it much more difficult for people to find locations. Um, so I would say five hundred foot buffer to all those things that I just mentioned. And I don't know how everybody feels about that, but, you know, if you say five hundred feet from schools, childcare facilities, drug and alcohol treatment facilities and parks, that's pretty restrictive.
I think that, I think the parks is definitely a, a big add-on to this. Okay, here, here comes, should, should we, I know, I'm sorry, Trent, should we look at a map with that included?
Uh, be happy to create one for you.
Is that, is that something you guys wanna wait for or do you guys wanna conclude this discussion tonight?
Well, I think we need to make, even, I just threw out an idea, but to make other people don't feel as strongly as I do that all of those things should have, and before we have Trent do a math, maybe we all need to be in a bit more agreement about what would be limited by distance.
I have a.
Go ahead, sorry.
I'll stop raising my hands, sorry. I guess, like, I, I like what Ingrid's thinking, like, you're sort of trying not to put a hard cap, you know, like, uh, that would be sort of disallowing the market to figure it out. On the other hand, you sort of created a, you know, your proposal was just a blanket five hundred for all these different uh, land uses or, or institutions. You know, if I look through this chart and just trying to even look through kind of what would be like Pueblo, which has so many, and then Boulder and then Aurora, there is definitely kind of an extra treatment around schools, and we are very much on the low side there. So I do wanna point that out. So I think I would propose something like what Ingrid said, but I would like to raise the school one, K through twelve certainly. And I think, you know, I, I think kids who are under five, they definitely understand stuff. So I think there's not a whole lot of difference between school and daycare. You're going to the daycare, you're bringing older siblings, so it has a lot of functionality like a school, but I would vote for the thousand along with what Ingrid said in terms of other uses. So that'd be my suggestion.
Thousand for the schools or for the other, uh, marijuana facilities?
To, to make it a buffer of a thousand feet from the school.
And, and leave the nine hundred for the other dispensaries?
True, and then add, um, the other uses that she said. She said, um, parks and, um, re-treatment, um, facilities. And I think you said it five hundred, but I, I don't remember now. Yeah.
I'm just gonna say I'm fine with a thousand. I, I'm, I'm totally comfortable with that. Um, I feel like, and especially where we are right now, moving forward, I think that maybe if we were the ones who were initially having this dialogue about the code, but we're not there, we're kind of retroactively saying, whoa, put on the brakes.
I, I was just gonna add, you know, wherever you guys end up with the, the distances, you know, I'm also happy to do the same exercise for next month to see, you know, what additional areas it limits and brings that number down to.
I think that could work, but I, I'm tempted to say that if we, if we do this, a thousand to the schools, which is double what we're doing now, and we add all those educational uses to it and parks, recreational part, whatever, we're pretty much covering the map with thousand feet circles for nobody else to come in. That's how, that's how I look at our map. And, and that, and that's fine, I understand that. So you actually have to wait for business to close before you can, before you can enter the Glenwood market. Commissioner Zippel.
One of the concerns I brought up last time, though, was, say, a school wanted to move into a zone where there's already an established store. And I remember we talked about this, but say, what if there's a, so somebody's got a boarding house and it's near a pot shop and they wanna turn it into a halfway house or a, you know, recovery, drug and alcohol recovery place? Would they be not allowed to do that because of the existing use that's already there? Because we can't have the two uses, right?
Yeah, no, we would, we would only be regulating the marijuana use. So the, the boarding house in that example could locate within a buffer of a marijuana location. The, I guess, the consequence would be that that existing marijuana location would then become a legal, non-conformal use. Um, so that, you know, if they were to go out of business, then you'd no longer be able to have a marijuana-related business in that location.
So in that instance, like, uh, basically the license wouldn't carry, it, the license carries with the business, not with the property or with the actual owner. It goes with the business. So if the business closes, then someone else could, well, has, has already opened a place across the street, so nobody could open a place in that existing location. That, that's what you're saying?
Correct.
I could definitely get in favor of, um, adding a setback to parks and halfway and, uh, halfway houses and drug and alcohol rehab. And if we, we're really doing this to try to protect our citizens, um, that, that really says so, rather than, um, putting a numerical cap on the number of shops.
Sounds good. Commissioner Shaver?
Well, I think, we have a, a real-world example of how the parks are impacted, and that was uh, sometime in the past, the, the residents of Cooper Avenue were, were concerned about, I think, increasing hours and their, um, real-world observations where people going into the shop and going across the street to the park and consuming. So, um, and, and I would suspect that if we just looked at adding parks to the whole scenario and gave it some dimension, whatever that dimension is, you know, if you count pocket parks and uh, as a park, there are a lot of parks around here and there, and I think that would do a lot toward, uh, limiting the number of locations in town. I would be curious to see just that as a, um, as an example of, of what, you know, just that alone would do. Seems to me it'd be really significant. Not that it's not warranted in those other locations, but just seems to be a big deal in terms of limiting.
Hey, Trent, did you, did you take notes of all the uses we wanted to add?
Uh, I did. Um, childcare facilities, halfway houses, my concern with that one is knowing the exact location of all those. Um, and alcohol and drug treatment facilities, K twelve, as well as daycare and park locations.
Okay. Commissioner Wussel? Ingrid?
If a, a current marijuana business is, you know, currently thriving and they should, does a special use permit expire with the change of ownership? And do they need to reapply for that? And the reason I ask is because if one goes, like, one sells to another buyer, do they lose that special use permit? And if so, then does the regulation, like, say that right now they're within five hundred feet, but we change it to a thousand and they're within, you know, they're eight hundred feet from, uh, high school? When before it was acceptable, how does that change? I don't, what my goal here is, is that a business that's thriving and chooses to sell has, has value. And I don't wanna put some bureaucratic challenge to their business fiscal success.
Yeah, that's kind of a play on, on Carolyn's question in that, you know, a special use permit actually runs with the land. And I mean, it may also be related to a business as it comes through special use permit review. Um, you know, a lot of times you know who the applicant is, whether it's, uh, the green joint or the green solution or whoever. Um, so, you know, I, i- if they were to sell that business and they maintained, um, good standing with the use, then they could transfer that business. Now, on the city licensing side of things, they would actually have to, uh, reapply for a new license through the clerk's office, but in terms of the land use, i- it would carry over.
So that's different than a short-term rental permit that expires upon change of ownership?
Right. Yeah, that, that's a specific, um, kinda niche within the, the short-term rental regulations.
So, I, I like the list we established, and I'm just, you know, blabbing out, but yes, the, the list is good, in my opinion. I, I read this here that says, all educational facilities below college level. That kind of includes a lot. Uh, the only thing I would wanna see, and I hope you can do this, Trent, is I would like to remain at the five hundred feet. For my own map thing, to see what that does with those additional uses.
Well, you know, we can, we can provide you with multiple visuals.
Okay.
You know, we can, we can provide you with the thousand foot or the five, and, and or the five hundred, and just to give you an idea what that looks like.
Do you guys wanna go in the middle and do a seven fifty two? You never know.
Well, and I think, just looking at our map, you know, basically, if you do a thousand, I think you basically stop a lot of the downtown. Is that, is that probably what was being thought of when they did the five hundred, maybe, Trent?
Well, I was, it was actually the existing locations, that nine hundred foot was when they kind of admitted a determination back in two thousand and fifteen that they met the, the need downtown with the existing shops and didn't want any additional.
So I think most of, if I'm wrong, but there's probably always been three since approval in our state, you know, one on the north side of the river and two, uh, you know, more in the core downtown on the, in the, in the, so, so it, I guess I would be curious to know if the thousand feet impinges on that. So if you can do that map, just to understand that. Um, cause you know, it is a, it is a business that makes sense in some ways with the tourist economy here in downtown, so, curious about that.
Ju- just to clarify, wh- when I mean the five hundred, I only mean the new uses with the education and all that. I, I'm, I think we should leave the nine hundred for, in between the marijuana businesses, leave that alone. That's how I see it, but that's just me. Uh, Jen?
I just wanted to clarify that you're talking about instructional kind of facilities, not like the bus barn kind of location um, related to something that, then the way you phrased it made me just question that it is.
Educational facilities below college level? Would, would that be, I don't even know what we have anymore. We used to have the Bridges, Bridges High School or whatever it's called, which is, I don't know if that's here anymore. I think that moved to Carbondale, didn't it? Yeah. So, things like that. That's, that why, that's what I think. So. Any, any more direction to, to staff, guys? Are we, are we all good with what we asked for, for next time? Okay. All right, I see nobody jumping and waving and raising hands, so I assume that's good. Trent, you, Trent and Gretchen, all, all good? Okay, thanks, guys, for the, for the information and the explanations. Very good. Great. Let's go into workshop item B. Adding Design Variance Criteria to Title 070, Flexibility and Relief Procedures. And I think that's Gretchen again, isn't it?
Yes, it is. So, again, this was continued from the July 28th meeting. And during that meeting, you considered amending the variance regulations. And again, you asked for additional information about why the zoning, the Balkan area requirements, criteria are more stringent than design variance criteria. You wanted us to provide more information about the administrative adjustment criteria that's in the current code. And then you also wanted me to add zoning information to that chart that I had provided in my previous staff report. So I did that. And so let's start with why zoning variance criteria needs to be more stringent. And I think several meetings ago, Tim Malloy very eloquently said, and I, he did such a, he's a much better job than I could ever do. He said that you need to have or to give property owners a level of assurance that adjacent properties or other properties within that same zoning district will be developed in accordance with those zoning district standards. So that's why, it's one of the reasons why the, the criteria are a lot more rigorous than what we're proposing for design variance criteria. So in other words, building height setback, lot area requirements, those things need to be held to a higher standard. And in your packet, I provided a little two-page memo, I think it was, from the Planning Advisory Service. And I do want to be clear, though, that it also talked, that memo also talked about use variances. We do not allow variances from uses. That would be, that would be a zoning change. So, the other thing too, that's important to note, that as, as you all know, that when, if we start to see a lot of variance requests for things like setback and building height and, and it's all within that same zoning district, and that tells us that there's something wrong with the zoning district, that gets back to your discussion tonight. And I'm not going to say anything more than that because it's the current planning application. The next, you had asked about, oh, I had, in the back of the report, I had quickly put together a summary of variance criteria from other Colorado communities. And what I found was kind of interesting is that a lot of them read fairly similar to the, the criteria that we have. There are, there are some unique distinctions, but a lot of them are, are pretty, pretty much very similar. So with regard to the administrative adjustment criteria, so the new code allows the Community Development Director to consider certain minor deviations from the Balkan area requirements. And I included the table from our code in the staff report to show you that, that basically it allows Jen to grant a 15% adjustment to things like the minimum lot size, lot coverage, setback, things of that nature. And that's, again, really to, the purpose is to provide a minor, minor adjustment for things like compensate for unusual site condition or to address, actually, sometimes it's to address accidents in construction. You know, it, it wasn't an intentional thing, but sometimes buildings get constructed a wee bit over the, the setback, for example. Then you had finally asked me to add the, the zoning information to that, to that table. And I'll just refer you to that table in my staff report. And I think that you had, finally, just as a reminder, you had suggested that design variances could be required to meet five or six of the seven existing criteria that we have. And so my staff report provided you those seven criteria to consider again. And, and that certainly is a viable option that you might want to further consider. So, for example, they wouldn't have to meet maybe the two hardship criteria that are in, in our existing, our existing standards. So Marco, I'm going to shut up now and let you guys chat about this.
Thanks, Gretchen. Yeah, confused as ever, but that's okay. Commission chime in? I guess, well, George, please.
Well, in regards to the seven criteria and the thought of only requiring a certain number of those to be met, there's two, two in there that I think should always be met. And actually, I guess, as Gretchen gave us this information from Greenwood Village, they have a similar scenario where they require definitely meeting certain criteria, but, and then in addition, this, that, or the other. Not and, but or. And those two in ours, and maybe one of them shouldn't even be in this list. And, but the number four, the variance required does not harm public and does not impair the intended purposes of the code. Or it seems like any, the variance should always have to meet that, that it doesn't harm the public. And the other one is, will not violate building or fire code requirements. Well, I'm, I kind of question why that that's even necessary to be in there. Because, yep, you need to get a, unless, somebody can, you know, maybe I'm missing something here. Please let me know. But you're going to have to get a building permit and satisfy the building permit, and you're going to need to satisfy the code requirements, the fire code requirements, regardless. So it seems that at least those two should always be met. And then whether we want to give some leeway in the other five, I think that's a valid discussion. I don't think there should be any leeway in, in those two areas.
Thank you, George. Jen, please.
George, I would just give an example of a building that is, I think it's within, I don't have the fire code memories, but I think it's within three feet of a property line that you have to have a firewall. And so, you know, your design code might want there to be a window, but you wouldn't be able to do it necessarily. And so I think that that's one of those kinds of areas where that fire code and a variance might be at odds. And there may be others. That's just one example.
So, so you're saying there could be a variance granted?
To be closer than three feet from the property line, for example. But that, and then your design criteria would, would maybe dictate something else, but you wouldn't be able to meet it because the, because there are certain things that you have to do in the fire code. Does that make sense? That's in, just one example that comes off the top of my head.
And do you have thoughts about the number four, the harming public?
We, we don't generate, we don't want to harm the public. We would like to.
It all depends.
So you, you might agree that that, that criteria should always be met?
And am I, am I correct that number six and number seven were not in the old code? Under the variance criteria?
Number six, that one definitely wasn't variance minimum. Yeah, that one wasn't either.
It was six and seven that we added to the new code.
Right.
For whatever reason. And then the old code out of five, you had to, had to do what, four or three?
There wasn't, Mark, there wasn't any hard, hard and fast rule of the number that, that you had to comply with.
Okay. Ingrid?
I like the Greenwood Village example, where there are certain criteria that must consistently be met. And then there are some that have some subjectivity. I think like Jen's example, not harming the public, meeting fire and, and, you know, fire code. I think those are, those are requirements that must be met. There's, you know, they're very objective. And then I think if we could structure something where we said those have all been met and these have some subjectivity to them or some opportunity to discuss, I like that.
So out of seven, you would meet, you would have to meet two always? And then a few additional ones to that? But how, how many freebies do you want to give?
Well, truthfully, I'm, I'm a little hesitant as just a planning and zoning commissioner to, to make recommendations on what are hard and fast criteria. And I think that direction should come from the planners. Because I think they have more depth and breadth of understanding about what variances don't have subjectivity. And I think we, we could get some direction from them, but that's, I think that the direction that I would like to give is just to say, we establish the ones that are not questionable and then we allow some to be questionable. Like, just like Greenwood Village, these four must be met. These three, one of these three must be met, or two of these three, or something like that.
Commissioner Zippel.
So I'm wondering, obviously, I find also those, two of those criteria just plain non-negotiable. The fire code, building code, and also no harm to residents or what. But I'm wondering, after we take sort of those two off the table, maybe since they have, since the applicants have to write us a narrative as to how, you know, explaining each of the criteria, maybe we just, since we're reading their narrative anyway, they tell us they've totally met this one and this one, they're like a little iffy on. And then we just read it, and we don't have to have a hard and set number of how many they meet because we're always sort of finagling with words to say whether or not they really have met them. Like, is it a hardship caused on themselves, sort of like the one we saw earlier? They put two other additions in, you know, in their setback. So maybe they brought it on themselves, but say, somebody else had before they bought the place, does, does it really change it? So instead of saying a hard number, maybe they just need to explain, oh, we need to read their explanation.
Thank you.
I think my place is I fall a little bit more, like what Ingrid is saying, where I would probably put more than just two as a hard as must and then meet one of this group. I do think we have the job of, and it was part of the reason for the whole code rewrite, of not being, you know, being transparent so that somebody could look at the code and say, I have a shot at a variance or I don't. But, so I, I hear what you say about wanting to really, you know, we have a unique town. But on the other hand, as an applicant, you know, can I build that deck into my, you know, over, you know, so I can see the water, but it really kind of, you know, goes on to the path or something? I mean, I think we need to be, have it written down and have it clear. So I guess I, I think that, I like the idea of sort of a must and a meet one or two. And I think the one that I wish we applied more is number seven.
I, I really wish we could reference a certain planning item from earlier, but we can't. Because I think number seven would apply.
Aren't, a number of the jurisdictions have referenced that very thing, that it's the, the minimum variance that will allow relief? I think I saw that numerous times when I was reading through these other examples. So I.
Which one?
The number seven, the variances, the minimum variance that will afford relief. That language showed up over and over again in these examples. So I would, I would agree with Catherine on that, that it's, that would be something that, that should be part of the hard and fast.
Marco, I'll just add, it's the number one that I struggle with so often when I've seen these. You know, we are, we are such a unique area and then, you know, sometimes we say, well, you know, there's a tree and that really makes you different. And I mean, it's just, that's the one where I'd maybe shift it over and allow a little bit more. If you can't meet that, then.
You know, the one I struggle with is the hardships? Because I have to be honest, and then I said this before and I'm saying it again, sometimes people come up with a better solution to their building proposal, to what they want to do. But it does require variance. And in order to get that better design, better whatever layout in place, they have to meet these seven criteria. And it's impossible to do that. And we've found over the past two years, or however long we've been using this code, that it's really hard to meet all seven. And I'm not saying we've had the best proposals on the table that we should have not had to meet all seven. But sometimes applications come along that, that need a variance in order to be better. And that's, that's my whole struggle here. When somebody just wants to build something bigger or something greener or whatever color you want to choose, that's, that's a different story. But if somebody comes in and they want to build a better product, but it requires a variance or two, and we can't give them that improvement because of these seven criteria, how do we get there? What kind of a vehicle can we create or deviation from this to get that better product built? That's, that's my struggle with this variant stuff. And Jen said it numerous times, if we have too many variances, we need to look at the code. And, and I've, I kind of agree, but where do we look at? What do we do? We can't just, we can't just say, okay, we've had this many setback variances. Wow, we need to change the setback. No, that's, that's not the solution. Because I still think that every application should be looked at on its own merit and, and approved based on what they want to do at that particular lot with what it's, with the. what it's, with the final product, the final product is what we're after. And if the variance criteria is in the way to get that, then I struggle. So I, I, I'm with you guys with, okay, we need to meet this, we need to meet this, we need to meet this, but I, I guess where I'm coming from, and this is something completely different, I'm just going to throw this out there. You all heard of open code? Or form-based code, form-based code, I think it's, it's what it's called. I like that, because you look at each lot with certain restrictions, height with setbacks, all that. But you, the guy wants to put a sidewalk where he's not supposed to, but maybe it makes sense or a walkway, let him do it. Instead of going through this process of, of having to meet seven criteria, which is impossible to do. So what I, what I'm looking for is not going to happen, but I will hopefully find something in the middle that I can stand behind, because I, I struggle big time with this. Jen, change the code.
Well, I mean, one example that we, we changed the way that the islands, that you can meet that because we kept seeing applications that were trying to make the islands in the parking work a different way. And so it wasn't always the same application or the same type of the exact same request, but we saw it over and over again. And so that was when we were like, well, we think we need to move what's in the code, because we keep seeing requests like this.
But that was an adjustment in the code?
Right. I'm just saying that you had, you brought up that you're not sure if you keep seeing all the setback things, if we should change the setback. It just was an example.
Right, right. And Gretchen, help me out, but the, the last few variances we've been through over the past few months, a lot of them were about setback.
Yeah, there were a few, let's see. We've got, no, no, so if you go back to the staff report, there were five requests for setback since the code was adopted. And it looks like.
Landscaping is about the same at five, right?
Land, landscaping, and we fixed, so Jenna's right. I mean, a lot of that had to do with parking lot islands, so we, we fixed a lot of that and allowed people the flexibility to do those bio swells like the hospital had proposed. And then she Sorry, go ahead.
And we did the amount required for landscaping where they had to put like 250 little bushes in, and that was ridiculous, where 25 was enough or whatever. We, we did some adjustment, I remember all that now.
Yep, we fixed, we fixed that.
The, the, the table leader up here is definitely setbacks, but we can't change the setbacks because of safety reasons and stuff.
Well, yeah. For me, like I told, like I said before, it's about the assurance that your neighbor is going to develop his property as is in, as dictated by the zoning district. So if you keep seeing the same setback or the same, same building height issues for that zone district, then there's a problem with the zoning code. And if you remember before we adopted the new code, we, we did analyze some of the zoning variances that we kept seeing. And one of them was for things like building heights. So we changed the building heights in most of the zoning districts, we increased the, increased it a bit. And we also changed the definition of how we measure building height. So we took it kind of a two-pronged approach at that. So, you know, I don't disagree that, that perhaps we shouldn't be treating the original town site like we do some of the subdivisions that were developed, say, you know, after the 1940s, because it is very different. And if, if you all really are having a hardship with applications you see in the original town site, then maybe we need to address that. Just, just a thought.
Ingrid, please.
Historically, I feel as though the concept of evaluating code and saying, do we need to amend code after we, we disappoint or turn down, you know, 50 variance applications is, is kind of a macro solution to it. And I think we need some micro solutions combined with macro solutions. So ultimately, it's about, like Marco said, the outcome of the project. And we've turned away projects where I'm like, dang, that was great design, that was really good use of it, but it didn't meet all seven criteria. So I think that having the flexibility within it, and obviously now I'm kind of beating a dead horse, but if we had some that were steadfast and then we had some that had subjectivity and then we still continue to evaluate code every six months or a year and say, wow, we did have a lot of variances about X, Y, and Z. Those are, those are code language sources that we need to evaluate and, and make some changes. But I, I don't think we can rely on code revision to really holistically make code function well. So I, I'll just throw it out there, like, how many of you are in agreement that we maybe have some hard, fast ones, and then maybe we have some that are more malleable, that we can say, you know, one of three or two of three, or we can come up with that. How does everybody feel about that?
And we adjust the code as we go along?
And we, yes, because we, that's part of our job is to occasionally evaluate code and just like the marijuana code that we are evaluating and saying, is this working? Should we change it? But those are like stepping back and looking, you know, looking back and saying, wow, okay, this does need some amendments. But I think in the moment, when we have these applications, we need to have that flexibility.
I agree. Commissioner Zippel.
You know, I do quite like the Greenwood Village example in that, like Ingrid says, some are non-negotiable and you must meet these. You're even going to step onto the next few, which are negotiable. But then would we require a certain number of them be met? Would they, some of them be met to some degree and maybe not others? But I do like the way that that is written out, and it makes it also clear that, you know, you can't endanger public health and safety, so we wouldn't even entertain that. So it brings us basically down to only three criteria that we really have to consider, which might make our job easier.
I agree. And Gretchen, by the way, I, I think when you said we may have to treat the original town sites differently, I, I think that's a, that's a great step to something. I'm, I'm just, is that, I mean, is that possible? Does that, could that raise problems? Or is it just, if you have an original town site, this is what you get to do?
Well, I, it's, it's possible. Can it raise problems? Yes, certainly.
Everything does.
Be, right, is it going to be easy? Definitely not. That's, that's a long road.
Right. And not, not to reference an application at all, but when, when you see, and, and, and George is gonna, is gonna argue with me about this, but when, when you see an improvement of what's there and you're the neighbor, wouldn't you like that? Even though it maybe doesn't say in the code that, that you're allowed to do something if it's pretty? That's not what I'm saying, not because beautification is going to give you green light, no. But if it's an improvement over what's there, shouldn't that be looked at as, as such as comprehensive plan? Issues, not issues, but, but statutes that say, hey, look, this is great, let's make our town better. George.
You're, you're asking me to, to counterpoint, I guess.
No, I'm not. I just saw your hand up, so I'm like, all right, George, we talk, it just works that way.
Well, we did, I was thinking back to, you know, we had talked about the town site. We did talk about, you know, allowing garages closer to the alleys. And I don't think that map exactly maps the original town site, but I think it actually went out beyond those boundaries, if I remember right. But, I mean, there is, there's an example of, of one thing that we have worked toward. You know, I, I'm looking at Greenwood Villages and their section A, which is the ones that have to be adhered to. And it says, the variance will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon similar properties or buildings in the vicinity and in the same zone district. Well, granting a relief for a setback is violating that one right there, or at least in my interpretation. You're giving a special privilege that's not consistent with everybody else in the same zone district, so. Is that, am I interpreting that wrong or what, what are the thoughts there? And not that I'm saying that we should follow Greenwood Villages exactly, but we've referenced that several times now, and I'm just going through and reading these carefully now.
Right. Catherine.
I think that, George, what you're saying is kind of what I was starting to think about is, and I'm getting tired, I'll be honest. What are we really doing here? And I think trying to go back to the July discussion and then the memo now and what Gretchen, I think what you were asking is not zoning variances, but can we get some relief or different strategy over design variance requests? And so can you first comment if that's accurate? And then just to go into the table on page three, I think you just gave us all the variances, but what you're really talking about are the ones that go are, what you're, what this is about is the design development standards and below.
That is, Catherine, that, that's correct, and thank you for pointing that out. I was going to jump in and remind you all that the purpose of this discussion was to adopt or to consider design variance criteria that are less onerous than the seven that, that folks have to meet now. This, the, the discussion of, in my mind, zoning variances was off the table.
That's all my fault. I added it to the table, so blame it on me. But I believe that if we're talking variances, we should talk about both.
Well, but I think Gretchen made a good point, and, and it's not to say that we're going to get there tonight, but you know, if I buy an asset, a piece of property, and I look around, I want to know that all garages will be five foot setback, or, you know, like you want to have an assurance of the value of the preservation, and that's what zoning is sort of doing. And Marco, I do hear, what if it makes it better? But that's often the eye of the beholder.
I understand, but if, if we're looking back at the garages need to be five feet or whatever back, we approved ADUs over the past year, quite a few of them that are all in the setback within one and a half to two feet from the property line.
That, that, Marco, that's a really good example of then this year, I think it was earlier this year, you all changed the code to address ADUs constructed in the setback. So now I think ADUs can be constructed up to five feet from the property, the rear property line. Whereas it had to meet the, the zoning district setback requirement, some of which were like 15 feet.
So that, again, we looked at the code and we adjusted the code. But that, that's a great example, actually, right there. So if you give me more like that, I may lay off the seven criteria.
Well, but I think what, are we talking about, you're wanting to open up the seven for any other, any kind of variance?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I'm more like, let's just talk about what we want to do for design and development, then I got to go to bed. So I'm just being honest, I have a 5:00 AM tomorrow.
I want to keep you up, keep you up. Now, I get it, like I said, I'm sorry, this is all my fault, but we are talking about variances, and I'm excited about the seven criteria, because I don't know if you noticed, I can't stand them. And let's start with the design, that's fine, but I don't want to miss out on the zoning ones, because I think they need to be discussed as well. So that said, do whatever you want with the design ones, I don't care. I'm just kidding.
They're just not as fun as zoning, we all know that.
George, please.
It is getting late, and I, I would certainly agree with Catherine on that. I wonder if, and rather than tagging this on to the end of already fairly long meeting, I wonder if it would be better to put this on to a special meeting that that's all that's on the agenda and discuss these items when we're a little fresher and earlier in the evening.
How about we review the marijuana stuff quick and then we'll jump into the design variances on a special night? How does that sound?
You mean, put both of those items on, on the, yeah, I think, I think that would make a lot of sense, because I think we'll get, get to better conclusions and, and with fresher minds.
I can certainly poll you all to see when you're available within the next few weeks, and we'll just go from there. Sounds like a great plan.
Catherine, Catherine, I totally agree, we need to do one after the other. I, I couldn't agree more. The, the one thing, I'm, I'm still a little confused about the commission, where the commission is pulling is, are we we haven't even talked about tonight what staff proposed. We went straight for the seven criteria. Is that something we're more interested in than giving the 15% leeway and, and whatever? Sorry, I don't, I don't remember exactly what you proposed, but are we more inclined to work with the seven criteria and come up with a solution? Or a combo, or, or what?
Just to clarify, the 15%, those are in the code.
That's already there.
It's already there.
Yep. And the only other thing I was suggesting was to add the alternative equivalence compliance options to things like landscaping, and there was one other, I can't remember what it is right now. So I my recommend, that was my recommendation, but I think that adding these options, kind of like what Greenwood Village has done, you've got to meet these and you can meet one or two of these others. I, I fully support you all in what you want to do for design variance criteria.
Right.
Yeah.
And since I'm listening now, that's all we're going to talk about, is the design.
Thank you, Marco.
Like right now.
Like right now. All right, I'm, I'm getting tired too, I'm with Catherine. So I will set up.
I, I can persevere, so just don't blame it on me. It's been a long couple of weeks, I think we could all use a
Little break.
Well, that, that said, Gretchen, do you have direction? I mean.
Yeah, I'm, yep, I will set up a special meeting. We'll poll you all for both marijuana and the variance discussion continued, and then I'll, I've, I've got a pretty good summary of, of at least the way I think you, you all are, are headed with the variances.
Is that okay with the commission? Everybody's in agreement with this? Okay. Sounds good, then, then let's do that. Thank you. Just real quick, we'll go through it, commissioners' comments, we'll start with Ingrid.
I think I'm all good, it's nice to see everyone. When do you think we'll move back to the city hall? Is there any tentative plans?
Not at this time, I think we've we have talked about the idea of like a hybrid Zoom and you know, it just is challenging, and Alyssa can talk more about what is challenging about our system in particular. But it's, you know, it's related to how many people can fit physically in the room. And then if you had a big land you side them, or like the Bell Rippey, or, you know, some other big kind of conversation, can you accommodate all of the people who would want to comment? And so I think it's not, and then just, you know, we've had other kind of crises that have cropped up, so. So no, the answer is, I don't think we have a timeframe.
George.
Well, I'm glad we're having these conversations, I think we're very slowly inching toward some thoughts that we could present. But, you know, it's a long road and, and I really value listening to other people and what they But, um, you know, it's a long road and, and I really value listening to other people and what they think about things and. Um, and especially the staff and their input. Very much appreciate hearing what the experts uh, had to say. And boy, I'm really glad to be able to breathe reasonably fresh air today. It's nice to see it clear out and actually, uh. I don't think we need the marijuana anymore, all you need to do is breathe in that fresh rain smell and that's, that's enough to get you off.
Yep, I drove through the canyon today, I, I.
Awesome.
Yeah. Uh, Carolyn.
Uh, it's, um, I don't have too much, I just gotta say it's kind of a pleasure to um, sort of work with everyone, especially when we're not all on the same page at first. And then sort of come together and, uh, and you know, the public can sort of hear how we work things out, like. Sending that previous application back and, you know, come back to us with something more like we like. Um, I think that, that shows the public that we're really willing to work with them and uh. It's just a pleasure to work with all of you and I'm, I'm glad our town is safe, thanks.
Thank you, and Ben.
I'm kind of taking a backseat here, just listening and learning, but, um. My mind is kind of mush at ten o'clock, but I, I think it's exciting to talk about. Moving the code in directions that make a lot, make sense and look forward to putting forth some more effort into it. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Ben, and Catherine.
Um, I thought I would just do a, see, and I wish Sumner was here because I ended up getting a call from the principal, so I left the meeting early, but there was a. Joint meeting with the Housing Commission and the City Council last Thursday, is that right? And, um. Or like a workshop. Um, and so the, the essential points from that was, was a sort of a distillation of several city-owned spots that. Um, the Housing Commission had kind of looked through and had proposed sort of to. To maybe um, get feedback from council as to would there be any appetite or interest in. Placing those under some kind of housing development and it's very much undefined, you know, something that would. Be serving somehow the citizens of Glenwood Springs or the workforce here in Glenwood Springs. Something that would be serving folks who are earning a hundred and twenty percent of area median income or less, so very much, you know. Not defined about the target uh, beneficiary, so to speak. No conversation over should it be a ownership or rental or anything, but it was just a very generic. Um, conversation, I think. Before I had to leave abruptly, it was going well and there was sort of general um, positive feedback and I just. I wish Sumner could kind of bring it home from here, but um, I just wanted this commission to know that that conversation had happened and then the two sites, just to inform you all. Um, one is, um, or is that Eighth Street and Midland, so as you. It's a smaller parcel, it's not even half an acre, it's small and maybe six units or something and then there was another parcel owned by the city. Um, in uh. South Glenwood, along Midland, kind of like near where the school district has done some of their construction. Um, it's a larger parcel and I think the, sort of the housing commissions preferred was that one that was more walkable in the center. Uh, of the community and I just don't know where it will go from there, but. Um, you know, it's just kind of toe in the water on a conversation about how great our housing needs are in this area.
Thank you, Catherine, and I was actually curious if, if we're gonna be invited again um, to talk about all that. At some point.
So I think, um, one of the things that came out of that meeting was this desire for the Housing Commission and Planning Commission to meet again. And, um, so hopefully Hannah will be able to juggle her PIO. Uh, duties, we won't have any more crises of knocking wood, um, and uh, pull that together for us at some point. So we may have a couple, several requests for extra meetings, so. You guys said you like meetings and you love being here with us till ten o'clock, so we'll take you up on it. Um.
I can hit midnight, it's not a problem.
That's what I heard.
I'll do it for free food, free food better come again soon.
And then, um. Yeah, I, if you, if you're ready, I just have one other item.
Uh, please, yeah, I'll, I'll finish out at the end, go for it, Jen.
The move study, um, we are, the RFTA is, um, I don't know if you've seen that, we've been putting it out, they've been working. The newspaper and it's been on our Facebooks, but there is um, a comment kind of outreach period that's. Happening right now and there will be um, a Facebook Live on Thursday night. Um, but if you'd like to take the survey or encourage anybody else to take the survey, it's at RFTA, Glenwood Springs, move.com.
Excellent, thank you, what's, what's next month look like? Do we know yet?
Uh, September, yes, we've got a couple big applications, one of which is the expansion of the Iron Mountain Hot Springs. Um, pools, so, uh, and then Trent's got. Uh, the marijuana application for the meadows. And there's at least one other that he's working on and I cannot remember off the top of my head, sorry.
No, no problem, just curious, it looks like a full night.
I think it's the Parks and Recreation World Headquarters location and extent.
M and M World, Parks and Rec, excellent. Um, uh, great, thank you, thank you all, uh, thank you staff for putting up with me. I'm just gonna speak for me, but thank you, thanks for playing along, um, also I echo everybody's comments, um. When we discuss things, we actually get somewhere and uh, let's keep going, we're, we're, I think we're only gonna make it better. So. Um, stay safe, stay healthy and we'll see you next time, meeting is adjourned, good night, everybody.